All right, good afternoon. Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. Rickaman?
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Present.
Mr. Vine? Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor Benjamin?
Present ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Mr. McDowell, would you bless us with a word, please?
Yes. Let's bow heads. Lord, we pause in the midst of this day and this time to ask your blessings upon those of us who have gathered, gathered in a very virtual way, but gathered together to flesh out and to discuss those issues that are necessary for this city of ours. Lord, we pray that you might touch and invigorate each one of us, allowing us to sense your presence and your guidance. We ask it, we claim it, in the Creator's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Are there any amendments to the agenda as proposed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Duval? Yes, sir?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the agenda with the following amendments. On item forty-eight, add quiet zone and bond court proceedings. Under item forty-nine, defer van robotics. And add item fifty-two, discussion regarding the development of security personnel or devices pursuant to SE Code thirty-four dash seventy-eight-three of Nehemiah Action Assembly.
Thank you to the second.
Mayor Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
I did have one additional clarification for the agenda, item eight. It'd probably be easier, sir, if I just reread that one. Council is asked to approve contract amendment number one to extend armed security guard services from January one, twenty-twenty-one to June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, and approve revised hourly rates requested by the Columbia Police Department, the award to security management of South Carolina LLC, the firm located in Columbia, South Carolina. This clarification, Mayor, includes hourly change from fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents per hour to fourteen dollars and eighty cents per hour, or a fifty-eight cent hourly increase with the projected billing from March twenty-twenty-one, when the rate became effective through the end of the fiscal year, June thirty, is twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen hours. I'm sorry, yes, hours, and that billing during that timeframe, fourteen thousand, one hundred and two dollars and twelve cents. This is no cost to the general fund, I'm sorry, the cost to the general fund is eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-two cents, and the cost to the water and sewer fund is five thousand, two hundred and five dollars and fifty cents. The agenda includes a summary of the funding allocations to date, and this amendment does not require an additional allocation funding. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
Item number fifty-two, Howard, if you would, repeat that again.
Uh, we're adding item fifty-two, and that's discussion regarding development of security personnel or devices pursuant to SE Code thirty-four dash seventy-eight-three, the Nehemiah Action Assembly.
He is second to the, uh, adopting the agenda as amended?
Second.
Questions? The previous question, Clark, call the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, March sixteenth and April sixth, twenty-twenty-one?
Does that move?
Second.
To the second?
Second.
Discussion. Clark, and Assistant Clark, thank you for getting this done so promptly. Move the previous question, Clark, call the roll.
You're welcome, sir. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Present.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Benjamin and Council, um, just a quick moment of personal privilege to recognize, as I'm sure you want me to do this, the National Fair Housing Month and National Financial Literacy Month being celebrated the month of April, but of course, all year long, as you all are so diligent about, um, activities in this regard, but the city of Columbia has celebrated the passage of the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight and continued to support these efforts to end housing discrimination and raise awareness of fair housing rights. And this year, our Office of Community Development partnered with Richland County Community Development and Lexington County Community Development to work together to highlight the Fair Housing Act's seven protected classes, which include color, uh, sex, gender, religion, race, national origin, familial status, and disability. And by so doing, there are various video recordings that, uh, our citizens in all of the Midlands can take advantage of watching virtually of these seven protected classes and reminding citizens to always contact us if you feel you've been discriminated against in any way, um, as you watch these videos on our city's website. As far as National Financial Literacy Month, um, the City of Columbia's Office of Community Development continued to offer financial education, workshops, and expanded outreach through the Bank on Columbia programs, as well as, and those programs, of course, offer second chance banking opportunities for our citizens through our partner banks, as well as our Columbia Kids Save Program, which focuses on educating our kindergarteners at an early age on the importance of savings at their young age, so they carry it with them throughout their lifetime. And so with that, we wanted to recognize those important principles during the month of April and all year long.
That's fantastic, so thankful of the work that they do. Couldn't be more important in times like these, so, so thank you to all of our team. Great community of work.
Yes, sir, thank you all. With that, we will begin our city council discussion action items. Item two is our normal COVID-nineteen update. The Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin, as well as our Emergency Management Director, Mr. Harry Tinsley, with a situational report.
Uh, I'll be brief in that I'm encouraged, as I'm sure many of you are, with the trends that we've been seeing. We'll see a takeout, uh, here or there, but consistently, we're seeing some pretty good, uh, low rates of infection um, across the state and across the community, and we hope that that maintains over the next several weeks. Um, obviously, um, we'd love to see a greater adoption rate, uh, as it relates to vaccinations, and then there's a good bit of work going on, many of you on this call, leading that charge of the community of thankfulness for that. You gotta get rid of greater penetration, universal access to the vaccine that does not necessarily translate into equitable access. So we gotta keep grinding in that space, and hopefully we'll get all of our vaccination numbers, uh, up higher. But I, I, I am pleased, particularly as I dialogue with colleagues and peers across the country, at the, at the, at the low rate of infection that we're seeing here, uh, and hope it persists over the next, uh, next several weeks. And, uh, of course, Harrison give his report, uh, Harry, read it every single day, thank you, um, for keeping us in the loop with all the numbers that matter. And, um, and thanks to the whole team for the continued, uh, the continued sacrifice. So, uh, I'm done, I'm City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Eric?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam City Manager. Again, thank you for your time. There's some additional information and data dashboard in your, uh, report in your inbox. Uh, I'll be brief, as I know you have a long agenda today. Uh, so worldwide, now, our case count stands at over a hundred and forty-two million, uh, global cases of COVID-nineteen. Unfortunately, that leads to, that has led to over three million deaths globally due to COVID-nineteen. Uh, according to the CDC, as the latest report out here in the U.S., there's over thirty-one million confirmed cases with, uh, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two deaths, as of April nineteenth report out. And here in South Carolina, as of today's report out, total confirmed cases, um, is four hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and six. Uh, to date, there's been over seven million tests, uh, in our state. The new case counts, uh, as today's report out, additional confirmed cases, uh, is three hundred and sixty-two. That is a six-point-two percent positivity rate, as there were just over seventy-seven hundred tests conducted at that report sample. Um, unfortunately, there are two new confirmed deaths, um, and that brings our state total of confirmed deaths due to COVID, uh, eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven. So here in Richland County, um, our case count stands cumulative at thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and three, with today's, uh, additional twenty-one new cases reported. Uh, unfortunately, there have been now four hundred and eighty confirmed deaths to date in Richland County. Uh, as of the fourteen-day report out from April fourth to April seventeenth, uh, Richland County overall, across all zip codes, had one thousand, thirty-four cases. Uh, that's an average, which is significantly down, we continue to see a downward trend, as the mayor, uh, indicated. That's, that's an average, uh, daily of about seventy-three point eight in cases, uh, each day. The report out for this period, two zip codes, only two, uh, had over a hundred cases, and that we'll see, two-nine-two-two-three zip code with a hundred and fifteen cases over that fourteen-day period, and two-nine-two-two-nine with a hundred and thirty-five. All other zip codes were below a hundred, just as a sample. So also, as the April fourteen, uh, Richland County's fourteen-day recent disease activity incident rate was listed, uh, Richland County as medium, uh, as the entire state is, all forty-six counties are currently at medium. But Richland County's positivity rate over that fourteen-day period was three-point-eight percent, which is encouraging, we continue in that downward trend. So the statewide, uh, recovery rate, uh, continues to be estimated at ninety-seven point four percent. Uh, the state case fatality rate is estimated at one-point-seven-three. As stated, the, uh, daily case counts continue, and they have slowed and have now, uh, roughly, are now roughly stable. Um, the state does not anticipate large fluctuations in case counts over the next, uh, few weeks. And hospitalizations, uh, hospitals still remain, uh, stable, they have good, uh, capacity. The bed utilization rate is seventy-three point six percent statewide, and the ICU bed utilization rate is at sixty-nine point nine, so that's, that's good news. Um, unfortunately, there are five hundred and five patients currently hospitalized in our state with COVID-nineteen. Um, as noted, uh, the encouraging part, uh, DHEC continues with vaccine distributions with over three-point-eight million doses received in our state, and two-point-seven million, over two-point-seven million people have been vaccinated. Uh, here in Richland County, we received over two-hundred-and-ten-thousand doses, with a hundred-and-thirty-thousand, uh, residents being vaccinated, uh, as of the last reporting. And also, as, uh, lastly, as you, as you're aware, the federally-supported Community Vaccine Center at Columbia Place Mall has opened and can administer seven thousand doses per week. Um, that will remain open for, uh, eight weeks, and it does have an operation run from seven AM to seven PM. Um, as of April eleventh, approximately twenty-three point three percent of South Carolina's population older than fifteen years or older has received, um, vaccinations. And according to the CDC's latest reporting as of yesterday, um, twenty-five point seven percent of the U.S. population have been fully vaccinated, and thirty-nine point nine have received at least one dose. And those over eighteen years, uh, of older, thirty-three percent of those have been fully vaccinated, with over fifty percent having received at least one dose. And sixty-four point nine percent of those sixty-five and older have been fully vaccinated, with over eighty percent having received at least one dose. And that concludes my briefing, thank you.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Eric, and Mr. Duval.
Uh, Harry, are we getting any, uh, vaccination rates by zip code?
I have not seen any report on that, and I can reach out to our partners and see if we can pull some of that data for us.
Uh, I think it would be very instructive if we could find, uh, where our vaccinations are going. Uh, we consistently see the two-nine-two-two-three and two-nine, uh, two-two-nine zip codes as having high incidence of, uh, infection. We need to make sure that we're doing the canvassing out there to get them to the, uh, federal center at Columbia Mall.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
If it doesn't seem more mobile units as well, Howard, um, Mr. Davis and Mr. Vine?
Uh, Howard sort of got to jump on me, I was going to mention that, um, if you would, number one, this, this report is very good. I know, it's easy to follow. Um, and over the pandemic period, you know, when we first started getting these numbers, um, I think you've already called it, two-nine-two-oh-three was one of those zip codes that was consistently high. And now we're seeing that there is progress, the numbers aren't, um, as, as bold as they were in the past. So that, that does show that we, we're making some progress, and I kind of use two-oh-three and, uh, two-oh-four as, as my, uh, my measuring tool, and, uh, so that there's progress in those areas, and I think that's good. You know, that's, that's one, one bit of measuring where we, where we are now compared to when we got started.
Uh, yes, sir, I, uh, I'm just looking at snapshot data right now, it's two-nine-two-oh-three is the latest report out, eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-eight total vaccine recipients in that zip code. But I'll need to look, give me a, a moment, and I'll, I'll get some information back to y'all collectively on that, uh, on the breakdown, um, rates by zip code, that's, that's good information.
Um, Harry, I just had a couple of questions. One, um, so we, which is good, we're consistently at medium, what, what is the, uh, percent positive, or what is the rate when, uh, for us to be at low?
Uh, considering, uh, the CDC guidance at five percent, uh, positivity rate, um, would be, uh, the matrix. Now, when you look at the fourteen-day, uh, incidence rate, you factor in those three categories, which is the incident rate per one-hundred-thousand, uh, the trend, and what is the, the trend been in that incident rate, and then what is the percent? So you take the, the, the level of those three, uh, if, if two are, are high and one is low, then the overall reading would be high and vice versa.
So I, I think we're trending that way, I was just kind of wondering, because I think you said it, we're at three-point-eight percent in Richland County?
Uh, that is correct, at the last reporting, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, so that would, that would potentially put us at low, but we've got to look factor in those other two things?
Uh, correct, the, the incident rate per one-hundred-thousand and the, and the trend in that rate over the last reporting cycles, and both of those are medium. So the, the percent positive is low, so those two mediums class as medium. We weren't low at our last meeting, um, but that, that rate has been steady at that medium.
Okay. Um, and then, and this might be information you'd have to get from DHEC, Harry, but, um, in, in talking with, uh, Prisma Health and others, I know that we are seeing that there are, um, people who have gone for their first vaccination and not returned for their second. So in addition to the information that Councilman Duval requested regarding, uh, the vaccinations, um, per zip code, if you could maybe see if, if there's a way for them to drill down on, um, maybe the percent of folks who are, are not coming, returning for the second dosage as well, so we could just kind of be aware of, of maybe what's happening in each zip code and see how we can support their efforts to encourage uh, people to go and get their second shot.
Sure will, that's good information, yep, I will, I will seek that information and get that back out to you as well.
So Harry, the-
The questions are, Harry?
Yes, the positivity rate is lower primarily because of vaccinations.
Uh, I'm, I'm not an epidemiologist, uh, Councilman, but, uh, I would say there has been, based on community spread, which would be the mitigations that we have put in place with the masks, social distancing, sanitizing, and vaccines would play a part of that if you take the totality of it. I would, I would guess that the data would push you that way. That's just my assumption.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for the great data as usual, um, Director Tinsley. Any other questions for, for Harry? All right, well, let's say, um, post, I guess we have the, um, the ordinance, mass ordinance expires next month, middle of next month, is that right?
No, I believe it is.
I think, yes, so, so we have, we have copious amounts of, uh, data to use between now and then. Let's hope and pray these trend lines continue, and, um, uh, and, well, um, we'll continue this quest to stabilize and save livelihoods, so, uh, thank y'all. All right, um, let's keep, let's keep it moving.
Thank you. Item three is an update on Veterans Services and Housing Initiatives given by Secretary William F. Grimsley with the South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs.
General Grimsley?
Yes, I believe Mr. Brennan invited him, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, please, oh, please, uh, if, if you want to introduce the general, well, feel free, General, it's good to see you again.
Mayor?
She didn't say the very first Secretary of Veterans Affairs, the first ever, ever, yeah, so couldn't, couldn't have a better, better first choice. Councilman?
Yeah, fellow Councilman, I want to say thank you for, um, uh, inviting, uh, General Grimsley to present today. I had the honor to go visit with, uh, General Grimsley and his staff, uh, a couple of months ago to talk about, uh, Veterans Services and the growth of the, uh, veteran community here that we are seeing, uh, in the Midlands area. Um, especially here in District Three, we have the Growing Veterans Hospital, uh, that was a great topic of conversation. It was great to hear everything the new Department of Veterans Affairs is doing, so, um, General Grimsley, thank you so much for joining us today, and, and look forward to learning about, uh, all the wonderful veterans programs. You are growing and how we can contribute to that here in the, not only the city of Columbia, but the Midlands.
Well, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, good to see you again. Thank you so much for your leadership. Um, I'm a full-time resident of Beaufort down on the coast, but I'm during the work week, a, a full-time resident here in the great city of Columbia. And, uh, so I really appreciate it, uh, this is a great place to live and work. And, and as the First Secretary of Veterans Affairs, a thirty-three-year Army veteran, um, and a South Carolinian, this is a great opportunity for a guy like me to try and do the best I can to give back to, I think, a tremendous group of deserving people, veterans, military members, and their families. And of course, uh, for a lot, for a long period of time here in Columbia, this has been the home for literally tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of military members. My dad entered active duty as a young second lieutenant graduate of the Citadel in nineteen forty-two at Fort Jackson. And when he retired nineteen seventy-five, his retirement parade was at Fort Jackson. And, uh, my sister was born at Fort Jackson. So, um, we have a lot of history here, and, and I won't take up a lot of your time. We have, uh, we're trying to continue the service to veterans and their family members as this division now department has been doing for many years, and grow a department at the same time. And I came in this job three days before the governor issued his emergency executive order, public health order, so it's been an interesting thirteen months. Uh, but as we continue to build them, there are an awful lot of things we have come to some conclusions on. And the first is, uh, that we needed a much better outcomes-based and evidence, outcomes-based objectives, and then evidence-based practices to really go after the needs of our veterans and their family members over time. And, and I say all that to say that this is really a, a public-private partnership opportunity. This is federal, state, uh, county, city, and local community, nonprofit, for-profit corporation, veteran service organization, private citizens, you name it. And so we're trying to build this coalition, again, against these outcomes-based objectives, and, and using the social determinants of health to really get after the successful veteran population, defined as, as individual veterans and their family members who are mentally, socially, uh, physically, emotionally, spiritually, familiarily, financially sound, um, that they are satisfied in the dignified manner in which they're treated, that they're respected by their fellow citizens, and that they're proud of their own continued contributions while they're serving, and they're continuing contributor, contributions to South Carolina and the nation. And, and I think if we can establish a success criteria of that, and then work our way backward into how we're applying our mission, how we're working against, uh, lines of effort to assist veterans and their family members to obtain the benefits to which they're entitled, and to really advocate for all of our active-duty installations, and then in partnership with our great National Guard, to, to really work as advocates for the sustainment and growth of our military presence in the state, that's active reserve and guard across all six services, uh, to really do better and inform and educate the people of South Carolina and our veterans, about who we are, what we do, how we do it, and, and what we can bring to the, to the state in strength. And then the biggest one, though, the main line of effort, is the notion of integrating the effects of all, of all entities, all groups of people who provide, uh, a service to or are interested in veterans. And that's why it's important, I think, that I spend a few minutes with y'all here today, because this is an incredibly military-supportive city and part of South Carolina, in an incredibly supportive, uh, military-supportive state. And, and we don't see that in other places. Um, and I've literally lived and served all of, I was an Army brat, so with the exception of my four years in college, I've spent most of my life doing something in a uniform somewhere and moving constantly. So I moved nine times in my first eighteen years, I was four years in college, and I moved twenty-two times in thirty-three years in active duty on my own, and about forty-two months in combat, um, in deployments. And, and so it, it's a great opportunity, as I said, for me to do some introspection and then look backward on how do we take this experience and then transpose it on the four-hundred-and-six-thousand veterans across the state? And for us here in Columbia, it's, and, well, Richland and Lexington County, it's almost thirty, I'm sorry, twenty-three thousand veterans between the two counties. I don't have it broken down by within the city limits, but it, it's a very large number. And when you add immediate and extended family on that, this is a big part of the fabric of Columbia and, and the, and the community. And, and so there are several things we're working on in this integration phase that, that I think might be of some import, and, and that we can certainly always use your leadership and your help. And the first one is, our- different than anybody else, maybe our experience that got us here, but we all experience challenges and opportunities in life, and, and they're very complicated. And, and with addressing those complications, it takes not just complex risk factors, but unique tailored solutions from a wide variety of capabilities and services to deliver back, to really take advantage of everything that's already resident in the state to be able to care for this population. And in many cases, by care, I mean to the, get to the left side of a problem, before it ever gets to a problem. And, and so some of the things we're trying to work on, uh, and I'll start with the great service that we've already got from the city chamber, by the way, Chamber of Commerce, as well as the broader, uh, Richland County, and then working with the State Manufacturing Alliance and the State Chamber in veteran employment. So today, uh, we sit in COVID at about, well, best numbers we have from the U.S. Department of Labor, between four and a half and four-point-seven percent veteran unemployment today. And that's about two percent up from where we were a year ago, not dissimilar from the rest of society. And so we have been working a series of virtual job fairs to align veterans and their, and their family members, including transitioning service members, into the right kinds of jobs based on the right skill sets. And, and what we have found is that in many cases, we have employers who are looking for veterans who can't find the veterans, and we inversely have veterans looking for jobs who don't find the right employers. And so what we're trying to do is close that gap. And we have found, and I don't really know how these things work, because I've been married to the same woman for thirty-nine years, but it's like a dating app. And, and it has become very interesting and useful, where a guy like me, Grimsley, lists his knowledge, skills, and abilities and attributes. Uh, this is my background experience, this is where I want to live, this is where I'm willing to work, kind of my salary range. And prospective employers sign on to the same thing, list theirs, and if you get a fifty percent or higher match, it automatically generates a phone interview. So we've demonstrated this successfully now in Sumter, we're going to bring one here focused in around Fort Jackson. It doesn't really matter where you're based, because it's virtually, you can do it from anywhere in the state. And we've had a really high initial contact rate success thus far. We're going to do five or six of these over the next year. And we get between five and, well, we had as few as five hundred, we've had as many as about two thousand people actually sign on and participate with forty-plus employers at the first one we did in Sumter. And this is really powerful. Uh, yesterday, uh, thanks to Director Adams at Admin, the governor, and, and many others, especially state human resources, we have reinstituted the Veteran Hiring Preference for State Employees. So there are thirteen hundred empty jobs in state government today. Um, and veteran, it doesn't automatically guarantee anything, other than if a veteran applies for an empty job, as long as one of, at least one of them, they have to be interviewed for the job, as long as they're qualified. And so this is an opportunity to get some sort of veteran preference and to take advantage of this population and bring them into state government. It's, it's part of building the resilience. Um, and, and then there's a whole host of other opportunities we're using through telehealth-enabled, uh, health, both behavioral and physical. We're working some peer-to-peer substance abuse, uh, counseling, tele-enabled. It's a federal grant through DAOTUS using a private partner that we're implementing using nonprofits. I can't get any more- I can't get any more complicated than that. But it's an awesome opportunity because it's peer-to-peer and it's veteran addicted people, substance abuse addicted people recovering, who are actually providing the counseling. And what we're seeing is a giant sign-on, a huge return on this investment because people are now realizing there's lots of places, lots of ways you can come in from the cold, and there's no wrong door. So it doesn't have to be the US Department of Veterans Affairs, although they have enormously robust capabilities. It could be a nonprofit, it could be another governmental agency, local city, county, or state. It could be a federal opportunity, but it's really pulling all these together back again, back to this outcomes-based objectives based on measure, quantifiable and qualifiable measured performance and effectiveness. So they're actually grading ourselves over time, and we continue to implement this. You mentioned housing early on, and I'll touch on that just briefly. And as I said, I keep an apartment here in downtown Columbia or on Hampton Street. So I'm sort of in the confluence of the Methodist Church, the Baptist Church, and the Presbyterian Church. And so a lot of our homeless citizens get meals there, and I see them, and I talk to a bunch of them all the time. And we do have a homeless challenge, not just general population, but across the state. And depending on whether you use the annual annualized data or what they call the point-in-time through continuum of care data, and it does vary, roughly in across the veterans of Richland County, which as I said is about twelve and a half thousand, there are, at least in the point-in-time count, about seventy-five homeless veterans in Richland County. That's our best guess, and it is unfortunately kind of a swag. But when you look across the state, it's about four hundred and fifty. So Richland County is relatively high up there. But there are some interesting statistics, and there's some great programs as to how all that comes about. And by the way, and I'll use some state statistics, but I think demographically we can transpose it. Unfortunately, our homeless veteran population tends to be toward those who are the most disenfranchised, especially racially. So about fifty-five percent are African-American, about ten percent are women, which I find very interesting. I'm a little surprised at this, but our homeless veteran age range, the preponderance, over a third are in the fifty-five to sixty-four-year age group, which is exactly where I sit. We had a long time where the Vietnam population, which is older than that now, was our largest population. The most likely to be homeless, though, immediately after service are our younger veterans, the immediate transition out of service post nine eleven. And there are a variety of reasons for that, and I'll talk about an additional program we're trying to implement. Pages here. About a third of our homeless are chronically homeless, like consistently homeless over three years. They have challenges, they come in and out of shelter, and these are not all unsheltered homeless people, by the way. But about a fifth of them have been homeless for twelve or four months, and again, are chronically. And about sixty-five, sixty-six percent, so about two-thirds of them are, have a disabling condition one way or another. Fifty percent of those disabling have a behavioral or mental health challenge, generally also exacerbated by substance abuse problem. And then lastly, what I find very interesting about all of this is also about sixty-six percent do have a consistent source of income. So it's not that they're completely destitute. Most of them get something from the US Department of Veterans Affairs through their own disability compensation. Others are getting it through Social Security or Social Security disability. Some of them are getting it through some other defined benefit, or in some cases, it's a divorce settlement. And some of them are getting some earned income. So they're not all completely destitute, but it is a big challenge. And as I said, about ten percent are women, and of that ten percent, almost all of them have experienced some sort of domestic violence or in some cases with veterans, military sexual trauma or intimate partner violence, which as we know is a recurring problem, especially among our women, our women in general, and our women veterans especially. And so, and then lastly, oddly enough, and I can't really explain this, but about ten percent of our veterans nationally, and also I'll just assume South Carolina is the same, choose to be homeless. They're not rendered homeless by any circumstances, well, it might be by circumstance, but they're choosing to remain homeless. They have no interest in being sheltered. I quite frankly don't understand that, I don't get it. But that is a factor, and we run into that on occasion, especially in some of our parks here in town, as well as other places around the state, that's true. And so there are tons of great programs, the US Department of Veterans Affairs in partnership with us and local nonprofits administer some great programs, the HUDVASH program, which is really more about chronically homeless. And then the Perdiem Grant, Grant Perdiem Program has some opportunities for building and sustaining existing facilities, getting transitional beds and working employment and other opportunities. Both Dorn here for us and Ralph Johnson in Charleston have homeless coordinators who also work the continuum of care across holistic health promotion, which includes substance abuse and employment opportunities, sheltering, drug, drug, and alcohol testing, and in addition to mental and behavioral health and other counseling and therapy opportunities to include non-traditional or alternative therapies. So the programs are out there, and we continue to strive for them, and we have blessed here in town with some great opportunities through nonprofits and the grant opportunities that have been provided them. So Transitions right at the end of the street here is a great example of that. What Craig Curry, retired Army Colonel, does leading over there is just spectacular, and he is a holistic viewing guy. But One Eighty Place and the many others echo in the more of the eastern part of the state, there are a lot of great partners out there. So I would close by telling you, I'm extraordinarily honored to be in this job. I think we have nothing but bright futures ahead of us. We got tons of work to do, but this is good work, this is purposeful work, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be in this position to give back to our state and to do so in our great capital city. And so for what y'all do every day, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you very much for your leadership. It does not go unnoticed or unappreciated. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Secretary, and thank you for your service. And I'm not sure, do we have a written copy of your report? I mean, there's really, really good data in there that would be helpful, particularly I think as we shape our discussions going forward. I think the biggest challenge as we do with veterans and our unsheltered population and quite frankly, society in general is going to be behavioral health the next several years. I mean, the federal government, state government has historically disinvested in that space, and we're seeing the results of it. And it seems like there's a real wind in our sails now to get some really thoughtful, long-term strategic investments and helping people get back on track. So I'd love to have a copy of the report if we already have it.
Yes, sir. So what I'll offer you is we were directed by the General Assembly to do a complete study on veteran issues in the last session. So three senators, three members of the House, and me. And I used part of my DAOTUS grant to hire two graduate research assistants from New York to South Carolina who helped me out. And so we compiled a report, much of this is contained in that, it's much broader than what I laid out. I would offer, that's a good start point, and then if there are questions or places you want to work on more some detail, I would be happy to do that or connect everybody to the right point. I'll have that mailed, emailed over to the team.
Thank you, General.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it.
All right, any other questions, General Grimsley? We're good? All right, thank you, sir. All right, take care.
Thank you, General. At this time, Mayor Benjamin, we will move into our fourth item, which is the Calhoun Street Road Diet and Bike Lane Project. I've asked our staff to give an update on this project. It's my understanding it was recently mentioned in some type of community meeting or format, and I believe that the information that was shared at the time was inaccurate. And so we certainly want to make sure that the public has the accurate information on this project that has never been halted, but certainly I've always instructed our staff to do our due diligence to make sure that we can do it the right way. And so today, we want to just briefly present to you these improvements that are planned and the outreach that must occur properly in a pandemic world that we've been living in. So with that, we have Ms. Dana Higgins, our City Director of Engineering, and Ms. Lucinda Statler, our Planning Administrator.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Good afternoon. Lucinda and I'd like to talk to you about the Calhoun Street improvements. The improvements that will consist of installing bicycle accommodations between Wayne and Harden. Just to give you a little background, in twenty-twelve, the referendum was passed with a budget of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars to re-stripe bike lanes. With that not being enough to do anything but re-stripe, the city went back to CTC in twenty-twenty, and we secured five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars additional. We've had two public meetings back in twenty-eighteen, with the third meeting stalled due to the COVID. Today, we're seeking council approval to resume public outreach and ultimately to move the project forward. Lucinda will go into more detail now.
Thanks, Dana. So just briefly, the benefits of the proposed road diet are to provide reduced points of conflict for drivers. There will be wider, more comfortable driving lanes, and the roads maintain efficient turns by providing a center turn lane. And I'm just going to briefly click through a few slides that illustrate the various configurations of the blocks. These were designed to ensure maximum safety and minimal disruption of traffic patterns. Some blocks will add sharos to existing traffic lanes. Some will reduce the number of traffic lanes and eliminate parking on one side to provide designated bike lanes. And some blocks will maintain current traffic lanes and eliminate parking on one side to provide designated bike lanes. Block-by-block diagrams such as this one will be provided in the public meeting to illustrate the exact configuration of changes to each of the thirteen effective blocks in the project. This is an example showing the block between Assembly and Main. The proposed schedule moving forward will be to hold a virtual public outreach session in June. The project would then go out to bid this fall, and we anticipate construction next spring. Possibly a B-PAC bike ride or promotional event could be held for Bike Month in twenty-twenty-two. To summarize the outreach, the June virtual meeting will use the Zoom, public input, and YouTube platforms to ensure access to all. Two to three weeks in advance, public notice will include a press release, a banner on the city's homepage with a link to the project page, which will have project details and diagrams. Email distribution to our existing distribution list, signs along the corridor to alert residents as well as commuters, and staff will contact neighborhood leaders directly. To summarize, we'd like to point out that this project has not been halted or stalled. All efforts have been made to ensure proper funding is available to provide the best outcomes for the project. Currently, all funding is in place, the CTC funding for resurfacing, as well as the penny tax funding for re-striping. Given the unprecedented year we've had during COVID, we want to ensure that our outreach efforts are fresh, and today we are seeking council approval to proceed with public outreach and with implementation. And that's the end of the slides, and of course, we can click back to anything that you guys want to look at.
Thank you, Dana, Lucinda. I know this presentation is in councils' inboxes in case they also need to share the accurate information with members of the public. Any questions?
Are there any questions for staff? I can't see everyone with the screen up, so Mr. McDowell?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me just ask one question. I understand that public input is scheduled for June?
Yes, sir, we don't have a
Is it?
I'm sorry.
Is there a specific date?
We don't have a date scheduled yet, we were waiting for council's blessing to move forward, and then we would pick a date and start advertising that.
What do we have, let me ask you this then, do we have public input prior? What I think you're asking is, do we approve this and then have public input, or is it just reverse?
I think they want Reverend McDowell, you all's approval to move forward now with public input. And then once we get that input, we would, you know, certainly be coming back to you all again to reflect anything that we hear, you know, if any changes need to be made based off that input. Yes, sir. We just want to make sure that you all are clear on where, from the evolution of the project to now, so that we can move forward with refreshing public input.
Well, the reason I raise that, of course, I don't want a situation that happened, say, on Fair Road to happen again without the kind of input we need so that, once we start a project, we don't turn around again and have to do something, do something else. So yes, if we're just looking, if we're just asking the council to approve starting the process of public input, then of course, I'm okay with that.
Yes, sir, we're asking to get your approval to start it, to get your input on how you want it to be, where you, you know, virtual, in person, with socially distant mechanism, whatever you want to see. I think the staff and I are asking for your input on that, but certainly ready to move forward with some type of input.
All right.
Or as much input as necessary.
Thank you, ma'am, too, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, Dana or Lucinda? Thank you for the update. Let's get this one done, y'all. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward, we are now moving into the budget discussion, Mayor Benjamin and council. And obviously, every year under normal circumstances, we incorporate our water and Columbia Water Update and our rate study review. Last year during the budget, obviously, we were not able to move forward with the normal rate study progression of potential increases, et cetera, just due to circumstances. You know, I'm amazed at how this team has worked, how you all have led in order for us to sustain ourselves through some very hard times. And with that, Clint is going to give you some information about Columbia Water, our progress that we've made, as well as you'll hear from Mr. Robert Chambers, the Principal Consultant at Black and Beach, who is always wonderful to assist us through our rate study review. And I think what you will find to be a very remarkable proposal to allow us to get back to sustain our infrastructure and our CIP even during some difficult times. So we look forward to your feedback as we make our way through the presentations. So Mr. Clint Shealy, Assistant City Manager of Columbia Water, will get us started.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Appreciate a little bit of time to be with you today. I know that we are under a time schedule, but we'll do our best to move through these slides as quickly as we can. This has been an unusual year, a most unusual year. But we wanted to share a couple of highlights with you and also the public. And again, most importantly, I want to focus on capital improvement program and our projects that are critical as we move forward and trying to advance a lot of the items, major significant projects and improvements as we move forward. So as Ms. Wilson said, Robert Chambers will follow this presentation with his review of our financial position and some rate recommendations as well, and what we consider to be good news. But let's move forward with our agenda, and y'all feel free to interject questions throughout. We'll talk a little bit about the impact of COVID on our operations. We'll briefly mention the AMI project and where that significant investment stands. We feel like we need to provide an update about the consent decree, no Columbia Water briefing would be complete without doing that. And then again, spend some time talking about our capital improvements and some key projects that we would like to advance. And then we'll finish up with a review of just our stormwater progress. So in terms of utility operations, I really can't say enough about our staff in all areas, including utility operations, engineering, customer care, public works. Our folks have just done a remarkable job of showing up and moving forward all throughout the pandemic. I'm really, really proud of them and how they've responded to this challenge and how we've been able to provide essential services and be able to do that in an efficient way. We see some statistics about lost workdays and about, you know, COVID-positive tests, and this is just in Joey Jacob's area of operations. But obviously, we've been impacted quite a bit by positive test results and quarantining from exposure. So that's impacted our response time. They're not where we want to be, we're not responding as quickly as we would like to be for a variety of reasons. Certainly, COVID has slowed some of our momentum, but we have kept moving forward, and we've kept providing essential services. And that's really a testament to our great staff, and I just want to thank them for doing what they do every day. As we look forward, talking about utility operations and some of our areas, you can see a lot of vacancy statistics here. We've been very intentional and strategic about bringing new folks into our operation during this pandemic. And so we've somewhat circled the wagons, we've worked a lot of overtime, we've worked our folks really, really hard. And so we've somewhat circled the wagons. We've worked a lot of overtime. We've worked our folks really, really hard, but we knew they could work in a safe manner, and they've done that. But it leaves us in a position where we're not able to respond as quickly as we would like to. We're working on staffing backup and doing that in a smart way. But what we're trying to do is utilize outside contractors, some local businesses through indefinite delivery contracts to assist us in meeting some of those critical needs and being responsive as we need to. So sometimes when y'all call about a water leak that's been four, six, eight weeks, and we haven't been able to respond yet, a lot of times we'll engage a contractor if it's something significant. And we're moving into, we just signed indefinite delivery contracts with five local protege contractors, working with Melissa Lindler and her team, to engage them to help us with service line leaks, yard restorations, small paving projects. So we want to be as responsive as we possibly can and use our contracting community to fill that gap while we continue to staff up and train our folks. Our call center has also been very, very busy, particularly this calendar year. They were impacted by COVID as well. We have seen a significant increase in call volume. Part of that is due to our new phone system, which we're very excited about. It's got a callback feature where folks can leave a message, and we call them back at a certain time. We are rolling out a new chat feature. Really excited about that. The call volume has increased because we don't have the walk-ins at Washington Square. And then finally, when you resume this connection for non-payment, that generates a lot of phone calls. So we're getting an unprecedented amount of contact from our public. And Stephanie Latimer and her staff are doing a really good job trying to be responsive to that. And so we're working on continuing to empower and motivate her staff. She's doing a really, really good job of working with our folks in customer care, and I hope you're seeing a difference there with what we've been doing. So I'm just very grateful for her. We've got a lot of work left to do, but that team is very engaged in helping us close those gaps. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the growth in past due balance. This is a graphic that you've seen before, and we showed throughout the early stages of the pandemic as we suspended our disconnects for non-payment of water and sewer bills back in March. We saw a steady increase, but thankfully, we've seen a leveling out and maybe even as of this week, a little bit of a dip in the growth in greater than thirty days past dues. So it seems that the tide is turning a bit. The message is getting out about payment arrangements and about the need to pay to maintain water service. So we feel like this strategy of moving intentionally and slowly in terms of disconnecting service is working. It is being effective. We did not get to this point quickly. We're looking at ten or eleven months' worth of not disconnecting. So we won't spin that tide overnight and get the numbers back down, but we are starting to see a positive trend, and we're excited about that. I do want to mention, just show some graphics about the payment arrangements that we set up initially. If you remember back in October first, we placed everybody that was in arrears on a six-month payment arrangement. That was about nine point two million dollars of indebtedness placed on a payment arrangement. And we sent out mailers and encouraged folks to pay those past due bills. And between October first and January fourth, we collected almost one point two million dollars of that nine point two indebtedness that we rolled on the payment arrangements in October. In January, we started sending out notifications that we would begin disconnections for non-payment in mid-February. That notification alone, between the mid-January and mid-February dates, we collected about a million dollars of that indebtedness. After we started disconnecting for non-payment, the February to March statistics looked even better. We collected over one and a half million dollars of that indebtedness. And then as we continued moving forward, the mid-March to mid-April numbers were at almost one point eight million dollars. So collectively, we brought in about five and a half of that nine point two million that was put on payment arrangement in October. Folks are still working and paying down those payment arrangements. I want to let you know, we heard you loud and clear, a compassionate approach, and we've been following that approach throughout. I would say the vast majority, if not every single customer that we have disconnected their water service, almost every customer, if not everyone, who's been able to pay a minimal nominal payment, first installment of payment arrangement, and have service restored the next day or same day of being disconnected. So we don't have a lot of customers out of water and without water service. We've been very, very intentional about being compassionate and trying to keep folks in water service as we encourage them to pay their bills. We know that assistance programs are on the way. Missy Kaufman's going to speak to those a little bit later. But we've been publicizing the county's rental assistance program. We know there's some programs coming through Health and Human Services that are specifically geared toward helping folks pay utility bills, water and sewer bills. And so we're looking forward to that. And as soon as we get that information, that's the first thing that customer care folks share with callers that have had a service interruption or behind on their bills. So we're going to be very intentional about publicizing that information also. Wanted to provide a brief update about our automated metering infrastructure. We are about two-thirds complete. We've got over a hundred thousand meters in the ground that have been updated with this new AMI technology. So we are on target, estimating completion in March of 2022. We've been promoting and advertising our Eye on Water app, and we're starting to see usage of that application increase. We're seeing greater meter registrations and decreased field visits for meter rechecks. That's a real positive. Those have dropped by about a third. So we're really starting to see the benefit, and we're seeing a really good return on investment for what we're doing there through these various programs and tools that are available for not only our staff, but also our customers. So feeling very positive about that. We're transitioning meter reading staff into other duties, and that's been a positive impact as well. Doing a really good job of getting meter reach for those fifty thousand or so meters that are still out there that haven't been upgraded yet. So we have seen a considerable increase in the need for meter box replacements and backflow prevention devices. There were certain assumptions made for the base bid that was placed out there, and those assumptions were locally low, I would say. And so we're having to, in order to do this project well and do it correctly, we're having to add some more dollars to it. So we've got an amendment on your agenda today that's quite sizable, but it does give us backflow prevention protection at every residential meter, and we're replacing damaged boxes that we're seeing out there. So we've evaluated different alternatives. We put them in your agenda packet with more detail, but we believe this is the best option for us to get a good, complete project and to push that to completion in March of 2022. Just a quick map showing we're touching all areas of the system, and we've been very effective at canvassing the system. And again, excited about where we're headed. We have not, it hasn't been a project that hasn't had some issues and leaks and different issues with the meters. But for the most part, when you touch a hundred thousand meters, the incident rate of calls has been pretty low. And so we're pleased with the work that's happening and the response to correcting any of those issues that may have come up. Again, wanted to give you a quick update about our consent decree. We're on schedule with all of our deliverables. We've got several very important deliverables coming up. The supplemental infrastructure rehabilitation report and capacity assurance program, hydraulic modeling port out there for approval. Those are very, very important. There's a lot tied to when those programs are approved. So we're moving forward. We're continuing our progress. I will say that we did lose a little bit of momentum during the COVID year, partly because we had a reduced capital improvement program. We went from down to forty million dollars combined for water and sewer, until we weren't able to deliver on quite as many projects as we had hoped. But we are continuing our forward momentum, and we're meeting our deadlines, and that's really important. And we're doing our best to minimize any capacity limitations, capacity restricted areas. But I do want to focus on those really quickly as we move forward. I think it's important to know that the second bullet item, that we have... We basically matched our funding levels with our project execution for the past three years. So some of the bottlenecks that were within our different procedures that we need to follow have been streamlined, and we're able to get the work out on the street, get the investment of the dollars that you're approving in the ground, and that's making a real difference for us. So the machine is ready to chew up the next round of work, and we're ready to do that. I also want to mention that we're thinking outside the box. We've got some projects that are very time-sensitive, and so we've challenged the team to look at various project delivery methods, alternative project delivery methods, to deliver these projects quicker, to get the infrastructure investments and improvements made a little bit quicker than our traditional design bid-bill process. So we're working our way through one of those right now, and you'll see more of that type of approach to come where it makes sense for us and is efficient and cost-effective for us. You may wonder where we are in terms of our total spend, in terms of our work our way out of this obligation under a consent decree. And in terms of spend, we're at about the halfway point. We spent over three hundred and sixty million dollars investing in our wastewater system to satisfy these needs that are out there, but what was estimated to be a seven hundred and fifty million dollar expenditure. So we're well on our way in this journey, but we're right in the middle of a very capital-intensive campaign to improve capacity and reduce sanitary sewer overflow so we can work our way out of this consent decree. I wanted to speak just a moment about the capacity-limited areas. There are quite a few out there that if we are not able to deliver projects and invest in the system in increased capacity, that moratoriums will cascade down, and that means slowing down development. That means no, you know, no additional capacity for folks to build and tie onto our system in a lot of areas if we aren't able to meet certain project deadlines. So those are concerning for us. I don't want to mislead you. They're very concerning. We have invested heavily in areas like Lake Catherine. We've invested in Crane Creek. And we're investing in the downtown area to make sure we don't have those moratoriums. Those were tied to sanitary sewer overflows. This next phase of consent decree deliverable, this capacity assurance program, begins looking at the hydraulic model and is more of a forward look, anticipating where overflows might occur. And that can place us into development moratorium as well. So we've got to be very intentional about meeting deadlines moving forward. It's a different set of criteria that is about to be imposed upon us as part of the consent decree. And so we've got to really, again, be intentional about delivering on the projects so that we don't find ourselves in those situations. We are looking at an extension request for COVID. We don't want to place our future of being able to develop our system on being granted that extension. We hope we'll be granted that extension. We believe we'll be granted an extension. We're not relying on an extension. We're moving forward as fast as we can to make sure we don't have issues. I'm going to show you a map. Yellow is an area where we're projecting one year or less of restriction of capacity limitation. Red, we're expecting greater than a year. The green is the Crane Creek Basin, and downtown is not shaded. But I mentioned, because of the ability to advance some projects, we feel really good about Crane Creek, that we can stay out of moratorium there, if we're able to do one or two more specific projects. Downtown area, we're investing in the East Rocky Branch Basin. We've got another project this coming year, CIP, that's going to help continue to support development there. You'll see our shift is moving toward the Saluda River Basin. We've had some overflows there. We have some modeling results that are showing capacity restrictions there as we move into the future. So that's where a lot of our investment will go in the coming years. And we fear if we're not able to continue down the path of taking care of these next projects for this coming year, if those get pushed, then the Saluda River Basin projects get pushed as well, and it's a domino effect. So we really want to try to stay ahead of that curve as much as possible. A lot of the projects you'll see here, Kenley Creek, Lower Saluda River, West Columbia, Saluda Forest Main Extension, all those are tied to that Saluda River Basin. But there is some Crane Creek work in here, also some Broad River Basin work as well. So that's where a lot of our capacity-limited areas could be, and we want to make sure we stay ahead of that curve or finish those projects right on time as much as we can. There's not a lot of float in the schedule here. It's going to be very tight, very close for a lot of these. And if we don't get some COVID relief, then we're looking at really just a matter of weeks, days, and months of trying to finish under a deadline. So we're very concerned about this, and I know you are as well, but we wanted to just remind you about these areas and these critical projects that are coming up. In terms of our delay requests for our COVID force measure, we submitted a letter back in February that was really an excellent summary of the impacts so far. We did not request a specific timeline because the pandemic and its impact on our operation is not over. And so in talking with our attorneys, we're anticipating fall of this year making our more formal request for a time extension and painting the very full picture of what this impact has been. And we will be letting you know, and we'll be pulling out all the stops to call everyone that we know to lobby for this delay because it really impacts... We want to build back in a little bit of breathing room in our schedules if possible. So that is our target for the COVID request. I want to mention our capital improvement program. Let's spend just a moment of time there. We are requesting one hundred and twenty million dollars for capital improvements for this coming fiscal year. That has been our steady path many years, and we've been able to absorb that through our rate work and through our finance, being able to finance and bonding and whatnot. But if you remember, we contracted to forty million dollars last year because we weren't able to make a rate adjustment. This hundred and twenty million dollars is split, one-third for drinking water and two-thirds for wastewater. So it's a forty million dollar drinking water capital improvement plan. I just highlight a couple of projects here that are very, very important, and some that are unfortunately non-negotiable for us. Utility conflicts, eight million dollars for water. You'll see another eight million dollars for sewer. That doesn't count the Carolina Crossroads work that's happening. DOT has been very, very active. These are areas where we don't have prior rights, and the projects are so small that the Act 36 reimbursement doesn't cover our utility relocation. So there's still an impact on us, if not merely the impact that we would have if not for Act 36 passing. So fortunately, that passed, and that's going to help us on big projects like here on the crossroads. We are communicating, working well with DOT to try to minimize impacts, but the reality is there's a cost to us for relocating our lines where we don't have prior rights. The alternative raw water pump station at the Canal Water Plant, you'll see the money plugged in there. We're hoping we'll be successful with our resilience grant application to FEMA. We'll find out in June. But again, that's a seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent match, so we really need to feed that money in there, even if we're successful getting the grant to cover our twenty-five percent match. If that project were taken off the list, that stops that, or slows down, almost stops, the entire canal recovery effort because that project is key to derating the hazard classification for our canal embankment and moving forward with the FEMA project to restore the canal to the lower hazard classification. So very, very important work there. And I also want to mention the Shandon and Rosewood Water Quality Improvements. Moving forward, the first phase of those, seven and a half million dollars each. We routinely get brownwater complaints from those areas. We do our best to flush and try to make sure we're responding, but those are really, really important projects that we want to move forward as much as possible. So that's our water CIP. I'll show you a quick map. The items that I've shaded in red are ones that if we have to reduce the CIP, our capital improvement investment, those are the ones that would have to come off, and that's real pain there. It's real problems that we really need to address. So we view those two projects as critical to move forward with our phased improvement to replacing aging infrastructure. So I want to move on to our wastewater capital improvement program and talk about that just for a moment. Then you'll see some capacity projects right at the top. East Rocky Branch, very, very important to being able to continue development and the growth in our downtown area. Lower Crane Creek, also very important. We're seeing tremendous growth in the Northeast, a lot of suburban... tremendous growth in the Northeast, a lot of subdivisions, and we want to be able to continue that service. And that's a very, very important project to keeping us out of any type of moratorium for that basin. Yeah, I neglected to mention rehabilitation also. But as this year, we were not able to put as much money into rehabilitating our system. And that's something if you get behind on, it's hard to catch up. And so we want to try to continue that and beef up our investment in rehabilitation to the maximum extent possible. Because when we don't rehabilitate our system, that directly leads to sanitary sewer overflow. So here you see a lot of smaller projects that are very, very important to us reducing sanitary sewer overflows, to hitting some of those smaller hotspots that are out there. And I mentioned the utility relocation efforts that we are simply obligated to do. And then there's some compliance and maintenance items in our Metro Wastewater Treatment Plant that we really need to carry forward this year, if at all possible. A lot of red on this next map. Those red items were identified as ones that we would have to drop off if we, if we pull back on our CIP from 120 just to $80 million. So I want to talk a little bit about why I'm showing an $80 million level there. The reason is because last year when we talked about rates, and we were starting the pandemic, we contemplated $40 million for this current year and just $80 million for the coming year. We're seeing, and I think you'll hear through Robert Chambers' presentation, the ability to support $120 million. But I really wanted you to see in both the water and sewer side, the pain that we would feel and would be imposing on our staff and our efforts to unwind ourselves from the consent decree, on the development community, and also on our external base if we're not able to fully fund. So we're going to be asking for a fully funded capital improvement program at the $120 million level. I also wanted, before I turn things over to Robert, and before I start talking about our sewer expansion fees, I just wanted to mention that, that Robert Chambers and our finance group, and Jeff Palin, Missy Kaufman, Dan Alonso, the entire team has done a really, really good job of pulling together our rate work. And I think you're going to see what we think are very good results. It's the hard work of a lot of people, and the byproduct of some creative financing work, some very strong economic development work, and again, our staff. So I think you're going to, hopefully, you'll see this as good news. I did want to mention expansion fees as you consider a rate ordinance. We're also going to be looking at a revision to our sewer expansion fee ordinance that will be beneficial to commercial users. It would be a net result of a 33% reduction in that commercial fee. And we've talked about this reduction before. So this is not news. And also the changed calculation for yard, large users that allowed us to recruit really big industries that make a very positive impact on our revenue stream. So you'll see that coming before you as an ordinance revision request at the appropriate time. But we're also looking at making some policy revisions and changes, granting folks that maybe where there's change in use in a building that has had a large meter, they paid a fairly large expansion fee, and then they're looking to maybe change that to a restaurant. We're looking to give a little more credit for what was paid initially so that the person doing the redevelopment doesn't have to pay quite as much on their end. And there's also some discussion about an economic development fund. So we've got all those types of items to, to continue our forward progress with expansion fees and trying to recruit industrial development as well. So I'll finish up really quick with stormwater. You can see the maps and the projects that have been completed, like Gills Creek debris removal. They're successful there. A Devil's Ditch project that was in conjunction with the county, MLK Park Detention. But a lot of other work that is planned. So I want to highlight some of that. We've awarded over $17 million in construction contracts and almost $12 million in consultant contracts. And we've spent, of that amount awarded, we've spent almost $17 million to date. We mentioned the projects completed. Harlem Heights is in construction. Shandon is under design. Penn Branches will be moving to construction, we believe, next year. So really excited about the progress of our stormwater projects as well. The, in terms, this is our CIP, and we're requesting about $11 million. We're continuing to work the plan. If you remember, we paused our rate adjustment last year. We had a five year plan that we were working through. We'll be asking to move with our fourth step. In July 2019, we went up to $13.32 per month. This step is moving up to $14.15 that we'll be asking for on the monthly fee. And again, that is the fourth of five adjustments that you contemplated several years ago. So with that, I'll see, I'll pause for a moment. I'm sorry for the fire hose delivery there. But I just wanted to try to share as much information as quickly as we could, and then get ready to turn it over to Robert Chambers. But I wanted to see if y'all had any questions about the capital improvement program, the level of funding we're asking for, or any of our programs.
And Clint, I would add, obviously, there's a method to this madness today with y'all. As Clint said, it's a lot of information, but we're having to do it in this order so that as Missy Kaufman comes forward and we work with you through the each fund, you'll have the background information as to how we built the budget. So we've got to show you the water and sewer requests, the rate study. We're going to then go into the American Rescue Plan recommendations because they build into the final budget presentation that we'll give you today. So I'm sorry to add that, Clint, but I just wanted to make sure council was understanding why we're going in the order that we are. And if you have any questions.
That's very helpful. Mr. McDowell?
Clint, let's just let me say, thank you so much for that very comprehensive report. Thank you very much. Three, three issues that I want you to, to at least briefly talk about. I want to say a word of thanks to you and, of course, with the new phone system. That has helped tremendously. The reason I know that is that I've gotten several calls referencing some of the issues, and they've been very due diligent about getting back in touch with the clients, with the residents. Of course, the other thing, of course, now, Clint, there are some infrastructure leaks in the community of which you and I have talked about. Several of those kinds of issues. Are we going to continue to wade our way through this so that those things can be repaired?
Yes, sir. And that's the response time that we're not necessarily proud of, and we haven't progressed as far as we had hoped. And so we're, our staff are working every weekend, councilmen, and really doing everything they can. But we recognize that some of the response is unsatisfactory. And so that's the reason we're, we've got indefinite contracts or leak repair and restoration. And in fact, we're, on your agenda tonight, there's a local BBE contractor that we're feeding more money, we're amending, asking to amend their contract so that they can continue helping us. We've got a meeting tomorrow morning to, to talk about how to better use those local contracting resources as staff augmentation to help us be more responsive.
Great. Look, one last, one last question. There has been some glitches in the AMI, in the AMI configuration of communities and that sort of thing, which has caused, I think, some exorbitant water rates, water fees. You all have done well, of course, in when someone calls and we talk, they immediately make sure that issue is rectified. So there are some glitches there, and we are constantly working on those things?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. The, and occasionally, they make the news media as well. So we, we are being responsive to those customers. And we've got a system of catching the vast majority of those elevated bills and reviewing them. And the AMI system and the data that it provides to us has been so helpful in diagnosing those, you know, very quickly. But we do have an occasional error where there's a, you know, something has been transposed incorrectly, and you get a data dump. And we're trying to catch those because a lot of times they just don't look right. But we've also run into some where we've been able to, to help folks figure out they've got a dripping faucet, or we had a gentleman tell us, you know what, I did, I did leave the water hose running for three days in the backyard. And so we can see exactly when they, they cut it on and cut it off. And it's that, that level of detail in terms of the water usage. So it's really a powerful tool in helping figure out, is there a billing error? Is there a leak? Is there something else going on? But we've touched, again, over 100,000, and we have had a few issues, but they are very, very small in relation to the total number of meters that we've touched. And we are being very intentional and trying to respond to those customers and make sure we give them an equitable resolution when there is, you know, some sort of a billing issue. So if y'all hear of any others, please send them to myself or Tiffany, and we will respond immediately and work with the customer to get those things taken care of.
Well, that has worked tremendously well, particularly with several instances in, that I know about and that I've contacted you all about. You've diligently took care of that. And so what turned into an additional three zeros, it was just one zero. So I appreciate the team doing that. And of course, it would help tremendously if we can, can continue to operate on that same, on that same plane. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis? Hit your mute, Sam.
Sorry, is the system going down? I've gone out twice.
No.
Anyway, maybe it's, it's, it's something in the area. Ed touched on a couple of things that I wouldn't want to repeat. But I will say that I'm also getting some positives about phone system answering and so forth, and how we've made some changes there. One, one question that I, I really can't answer with folks, such as the one you got for me this morning about, what, 6:30, quarter, 7:00? Clint?
Yes, sir.
Bye. Take a look at it. The leaks, you know, we do have an dominant amount of leaks throughout. And I'm, I'm pleased to hear that we're trying to do it with some local subs, small contractors. But how, how do you really assess and maybe rate the system underground throughout the city? There's an exorbitant amount of leaks. And then we've got the issue that of who does the cleanup work? Does DOT partner with us on that? Or do we do the repairs, come back and do the resurfacing and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir. If we have a water leak in, in our infrastructure, it doesn't matter if it's a city street, a county maintained road, or DOT maintained road, our responsibility is to repair the leak and restore the roadway and the customer's yard to as good or better than we found it. Sometimes we aren't as, as fast in doing that as we would like. And so that's where our, our contracting help is going to come in and help us. They're helping us already. We're trying to be a little more strategic about how we're going to utilize those resources so that we can respond quicker. Our folks are working really hard. There's just a high volume of work right now. They are catching up. They've been working every weekend. They're catching up. But we've still got a lot of lingering work orders that are out there. And I, y'all, y'all didn't hear me mention today Mobile City Works, but that is, that is an initiative that we had last year that we really haven't advanced very far for a variety of reasons. I don't want to blame everything on COVID and use that as an excuse. But we haven't made the progress that we had hoped and we had committed to making. We do commit to making that progress this year. That's going to help us with our tracking and closing the loop and make sure that, making sure things don't get lost so that you aren't getting the call of, hey, I reported this six months ago. Where is it? It's also going to help our call takers have information that they can share with folks that call and inquire about the status. So a big initiative for us that we want to push forward hard this year. We have a, a system that is both urban, but also very rural in parts of, of the county. And so we've got a lot of water mains that have some age on them, and a lot of opportunities for folks to dig up our water mains and create breaks. And we've got a lot of breaks on our own. But doing things like the improvements in Rosewood and Shandon, Earl Wood, Booker Washington Heights, that helps from a water quality standpoint, but it also addresses areas where we have frequent leaks. So we're, we're trying to be strategic in replacing the more brittle, unlined cast iron infrastructure. We know the materials that are out there, and that's why we build a list to try to address not only water quality complaints, but routine leaks as well. So again, it's a, it's a long game process, but we're, we're in the middle of working that and trying to get the infrastructure renewed and fix leaks in a timely manner until we can get infrastructure replaced.
Yeah, I think periodic updates on the topic would help. You know, I try to do my best to explain to folks why, you know, the leaks are there and how fast it's going to take for our guys to get there. But I don't like to say it's just an aging system. Maybe, it may be in some areas, it may not be. But it would be helpful to me to know how we're progressing on that. And sometimes folks, you give them that information, and they understand. But, but I try to assure them that the delay is, is not just because we, we can't get there, but we just have a good number of them happening.
Yes, sir. I, I will, I will invite you. We've got, in, in the first two weeks of May, we haven't scheduled it yet, but we're going to have a workshop socially distanced at our Belt Line facility where we describe fully how we work through the city works process and what the city works mobile and what, how our progression is going there. We're going to talk a lot about leaks and how we're responding, both now and what the future looks like. So I'll, I'll be sure and share that, that date with you as well.
Sign me up.
Thank you. Clint, I know that Mr. Davis is a highly trained welder. Needs some more work out there in these streets. I think he's volunteering himself a service.
You can't plug those home, though.
Philip Simmons trained welder out there, making things happen for you. Put in the work. I'm sure if anyone says questions for Clint. Now Clint, I mean, the, the significance of, of so many major projects you have going on from, from water, the wastewater, storm water, to AMI, to just completely, I mean, you and I, I stand Tiffany's in the, everything from the tone, the responsiveness, the tone, the whole nine yards. I mean, it's just been solid. And I know you're juggling a whole lot of really major projects at the same time. And I just, I think you guys have done a great job. And you just really lean on us as much as we can, particularly as we engage with federal policymakers, EPA, FEMA, and everything else, as to how we can be helpful. But some of those projects you mentioned, you know, we, I'm committed to continuing to invest in the system. We've been doing the right thing collectively for a good while now. We're seeing the results of it. And some of the things you had shaded in red, we can't, we can't take them off the list. We got to continue to make these investments to, to replace some of these old metal lines from 40, 50, 50, 60 years ago. So no, I'm impressed with the, with the progress. Let's just, let's keep up with the gas.
I was about to say, if you don't mind, we've come a long way with the decree and EPA, so forth and so on. Anybody who understands that history would know that we, we have made progress. And there, I think there's some light at the end of the tunnel, but you know, there's some things that's beyond our control every now and then.
So absolutely. Any other questions, Clint? Daniel?
Yeah, I just, I would ask Clint if maybe at, at a future council meeting, you could give us a little more insight on potentially the private sector growth, reaching out to those minority disadvantaged businesses and creating more opportunities there because it's something we've talked about, you know, for the last several years, a lot about. And looking at the staffing needs that we have, I think it's probably the best time for us really to push that. I think it's probably the best time for us really to push that even further because one of the struggles we have, as you and I know, is is getting some, it's not fixing the the leaks and so forth. It's the going back and repairing the asphalt and the cleanup and the repairs that that linger on. And and I'd love to know more how we're we're growing that and taking advantage of the talent that we have in our community to fulfill those needs. Because, you know, our our guys can only do so much. I mean, they just, they can't work a hundred hours a week. It's just not possible. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to grow some businesses. And it gives them the ability to grow without having to deal with all the issues of higher bonding and everything else. So it's an opportunity for us to to really grow these small businesses here. So I'd really like to have some time here in the next next month or so when you have time to really kind of dive into it deeper and understanding where this could end up going.
Yes, sir. You do it.
Right. To do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So Robert Chambers is is next. I have Robert to share his screen if he can and 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 present the the rate study review.
Chambers?
Hey, hey, Clint. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Council, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present. I please let me know when you're able to see my screen.
There we go.
Okay. So we will go over the purpose, highlight some of your, you know, ever evolving drivers, discuss some of the assumptions that went into developing the financial plan. And then we'll go about discussing the financial plan and a few other items. So as you all are aware, we're here for, you know, three basic reasons. You know, to establish the financing around your operating and capital program, to to understand the cost to provide service and to make sure that in in providing this service, okay, you all price the service appropriately and the revenues that you recover as a result are adequate to meet your requirements. So last year, we initiated this discussion and we highlighted, you know, what considerations resilient utility would look for? What is going on in the market as it relates to the top industry issues? For example, on a few occasions during Mr. Sheila's presentation, we highlighted and discussed agent infrastructure. We spoke about resilience, revenues, you know? We spoke about the phone system and other information technology and customer systems, some of the same issues that you're grappling with as are other utilities. But then a year ago, when we had this discussion, we discussed the impact of COVID nineteen. At the time, we were in the early days of this journey and we we really didn't understand, even though we were trying to plan the best we could, we really didn't understand what the impact would have been going forward. As of right now, you know, we're over a year into this process. We have some more better data and empirical evidence. And while we're still going through it, we're better able to plan and understand the impacts today and as we go forward. And as a result, we're still at the same point as it relates to what are our drivers? What it is we're trying to do? At its core, we're trying to maintain a sustainable utility system that allows us to appropriately plan the finances, maintain the business excellence and engage our stakeholders. Okay? We know that we've looked at issues around revenue stability, how resilient our operations are. Are we pricing these services appropriately? And can we remain competitive? Those items still continue to be drivers and components that kind of push yourselves, the other utility leaders within your organization to 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 make tough decisions and grapple with complex issues. And we're still seeing those same drivers as we progress today. Historically, you as an entity have taken action as it relates to looking about adjusting, passing revenue or rate adjustments as needed to maintain the requirements of your system. You know, last year, given the existing situation in FY twenty one, we did not go about passing our our revenue or rate increase. We're proposing a rate increase in FY twenty two, which we will go over in detail in a few slides. So what are the assumptions associated with the financial plan we're going to be presenting today? In essence, we're going to provide an overview of three basic scenarios. The first scenario is what we call FY twenty one action, what we proposed to you last year. And based on what we proposed, then we're going to provide scenario one, which is a financial plan that implements a hundred and twenty million dollar CIP in twenty two through twenty six, which is a planning period. Additionally, we're going to talk about Project Sunshine, which is the the addition of a new client to the system. And and the impact of that addition will be evident in both scenarios. Scenario two will go about listing an eighty million dollar CIP and the results as such in FY twenty two. And then from twenty three onwards, it would be a CIP of a hundred and twenty million. One thing we really wanted to highlight, and it's been said on a few few occasions thus far, I'd just like to acknowledge and and recognize staff as it relates to the diligence that has been shown through this time and even leading up to this point as it relates to financial planning, turning turning every stone and making sure that we scored every alternative to try to, you know, provide the services at the lowest cost to your existing customers. You 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 achieved some savings in your recent debt offering, the refunding offering, which has assisted and is evident as a part of the study. And then your economic development department for continuing to pursue new and significant customers on your system. And we're starting to see the the impact of that initiative. And, you know, your improved registration of new customers as a result of your water metering program. All all these items have come together to to have an impact on your financial planning. And we just wanted to highlight and recognize as such. So here we have the basic results. The third column FY twenty one selected highlights what we showed you last year. In FY twenty one, for the year twenty one, there was no rate increase. We lowered the CIP to about forty million with the plan of going back to about eighty million in twenty two and then one twenty onward. Based on last year's forecast, we're anticipating about a ten point one five increase in FY twenty two. And then we're at, you know, mid to high seven percent onward. Based on the analysis and the diligence that was done by staff based on the scenario one, which is in FY twenty two, a hundred and twenty million in CIP, we're seeing FY twenty two revenue increase of about five point zero two percent. And that's what we'll be proposing today as a part of scenario one. Thereafter, we jump up to about a seven point nine six and we're at, we average about the mid six percent from twenty four onward. Now scenario two, which is the scenario whereby in FY twenty two, we look at an eighty million CIP. We're looking at a revenue increase in FY twenty two of about four point one eight percent. And then, you know, we we go up and down as it relates about six point six seven twenty three, six percent in twenty four, seven oh seven in twenty five and onwards. But this is just showing you the the relationship and the importance of of the CIP and the impact to your required revenue increases and the diligence and the impact of that diligence planning as a result of what we were seeing last year prior to COVID and the situation you're going through. So to provide a little more detail, in FY twenty two, which is the test year for scenario one, we're looking at a revenue total of about a hundred and sixty two point three million. We're estimating about a half a percent growth in accounts. And we're seeing decline in average use per customers, which is pretty evident because of learned and new usage patterns. Okay? We still have other revenue sources, which includes, but is not limited to expansion fees, insulation fees and other service fees. And then we have the incorporation of of Project Sunshine, which is a high volume water and sewer customer slash user. We're estimating that in FY twenty two, revenues associated with this customer that the city or that Columbia Water will recognize will be about twenty five percent in year two, which is FY twenty three, about seventy five percent. And then in twenty four onwards, you it will build out, the project will build out and you'll see the full revenue potential. As it relates to the cost or the expense side, operating expenses in FY twenty two is about ninety nine point one million with an annual escalation factor of about four percent. We're proposing the one twenty million CIP. And we propose an initial FY twenty two debt offering of about eighty eight point nine million. In addition, where as we always try, we're looking at a balanced approach to meeting your operating and capital requirements and meeting your established financial metrics, one of which is debt service coverage, which is revenues over debt. Okay? So, you know, just providing a little more information as it relates to the characteristics of scenario one over the forecast period, we're looking at about sixty five, sixty eight point five in revenue bond funding, thirty one point five in 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 system funding. In addition, we've listed all your bond issuance amounts. In the first three years, we're, you know, over eighty million per year in issuances. And then the final two years, twenty five and twenty six, we go down to about seventy eight point five and seventy six million respectively. And that's in bonding that we'll go to market to seek. And this plan and this program is what we've been utilizing as a guidepost to meet the clean water program and the requirements, to make sure your capacity requirements are are sorted, to make sure that on an ongoing basis, you're rehabbing and reinvesting into your system appropriately. And we always continue to highlight and provide this overview to you just so that we can continue to follow and track the implementation of these programs. So going into the details of the financial plan, and I won't go into implicit details of every line item, but the total revenues of the system, which is line eleven in twenty two is about a hundred and eighty five point one million and it grows to about two fifty two million. We have line twelve are operating expenses, line sixteen are total debt service requirements. The big thing we try to make sure we do here as a part of your financial planning effort is make sure we meet our financial metrics in an adequate and appropriate fashion, one of which is debt service coverage. You have an internal requirement of a two point O. And in meeting that requirement, appropriately funding your capital program and then trying to implement the lowest possible revenue increases or rate increases for your existing customers. Those three items become the levers and the balancing components in developing the financial plan. And and right now for FY twenty two, we're proposing a five point O two revenue increase. Any 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 questions here? I know this is a point where we may or may not have questions. Or should I continue?
Continue.
Why don't you continue, Robert?
No problem. So this is just a basic summary of the scenario one financial plan. And we've gone over it a few few times. So looking at the billing backs, you know, over the life of the program as we have documented and tracked and we've presented on an annual basis, we've always tried to look at a smooth path as it relates to annual increases. And since oh eight to twenty two, you know, the the typical average increase in the bill and the compounded average is about just over four percent, which in some capacity tracks with the cost of money. Okay? But the more intriguing and real interesting component is, okay, you know, what are you, what are you getting for what you pay? You know, what what's the value of water? And on a daily basis, you know, water costs you, your customers, on average about seventy seven cents per day. And wastewater is about a dollar forty two per day. You know? So if you had a, you know, if you had a a situation where you went about buying, let's say a gallon of bottled water for a dollar, that'd be still be over two hundred and fifty times more than what you pay for water. And what are the benefits and the value that you gain? You know, there's a shower, use, you know, shower, wash, drink that water, eat, do tons of stuff. And 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 that's the value you get. And and what we, if there's anything we want to highlight here, while the numbers on a daily basis, it may seem lower for various reasons than other examples. What we truly want to highlight is not just the number, but the value of the service that you're getting and how critical and important it is. It is, as we all know, to daily life and living. Okay? So on average, your exist, your typical utility bill, which is just under six thousand gallons per month for the typical customer, will grow by about three dollars and 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 twenty two twenty four cents on average from about sixty four point five five to sixty seven point seven nine. And when we break it down and compare each bill water separately and sewer as compared to your neighbors, you are about in the middle. So your bill is still, you know, competitive based on the comparison we have here for water. On the sewer side, we're seeing, you know, about, you know, the same relationship. But, you know, so is a, there's a little more cost associated with sewer. And, you know, that's understandable, given the clean water program and 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 other projects that you're currently undertaking to maintain the integrity and the level of service associated with the sewer system. Okay, going on now to the the high volume rate. So so what is the high volume rate? What is this all about? I know we've discussed this before, but at its core, this rate is targeted for a customer that requires water service in the amount of about three hundred thousand gallons or greater per day. This is being established to recognize and segment the service demand and requirements of Columbia Water to provide water source service to this customer. And 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 most importantly, it's been established to facilitate and support economic development within the 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 city of Columbia and more importantly, to facilitate Columbia Water's footprint throughout the region. The 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 objectives are, you know, to have this rate and the service be representative of the the actual cost of Columbia Water to provide this service. The objective was that it should be simple, easy to understand and create the least possible impact at implementation to the target customers. Um, at implementation uh to the target customers. And at its core, it should promote economic development. And that's been a, a, an important initiative for the city. And this is just another tool in the effort to keep pushing and acknowledging that that initiative and its importance. It is in alignment with the financial planning approach that we have utilized and we continue to utilize um on an annual basis. And what, what I'd like to do is just talk about um the scenario that we're going to present. Um, the, the, an existing customer or the existing customer who may. Sue this, this high use rate in your current system um is potentially an outsider city uh commercial customer. Um, the scenario that we're presenting will look at and target. The high use rate associated with, with that service. Um, as a part of, of, of targeting and 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 going about creating that rate, we're going to maintain. Um, the, the, the usage block rate. So typically your rates have two components, as you're aware. The meter base component, which is the fixed and the com- component that's charged to make service available. And then the volume metric, which is charged based on the amount of water service you use. So for this rate, it, we're going to go about maintaining the fixed component. But for the flow component, uh, we're going to target the outside water commercial rate. And we're going to maintain the existing four blocks, but then we're going to add a fifth block at somewhat of a. A, 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 a reduced rate. The fifth block will, will represent approximately usage at, at and over three hundred thousand gallons per day. And the economic development initiative and target will go up. Um, promoting economic development and incentivizing those high use customers uh to come to the city of Columbia. Uh, uh, based on this rate. Okay, so scenario one, as we're showing it, only applies to the high use water rate service. And there'll be no adjustments to the existing sewer rate structure. So we'll maintain the sewer rate structure, maintain the, the, the meter base structure on the water side. But then make an adjustment to the volumetric uh component. What do the existing rates look like? So for example, we're simulating a six inch customer. Uh, and for outside water service, that meter rate would be about three hundred and forty six dollars uh per month, based on the meter size. And then we have the block rates here for commercial outside service. So we have block one, two, three, four, and in this scenario, we're going to add a fifth block. So going into more details as it relates to the high use water rate. So this is the rate um in, 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 in essence, or at its core. Your existing rate um for block, okay, so let me just go back a step. So for block one through four, you have usage, which is zero to three C C Fs, which is block one. Then over three C C Fs to a hundred C C F is block two. Over a hundred C C F to a thousand um is block three. And all usage over a thousand uh is, is block four. In the case of this high use rate, we're going to go about adding a, a fifth block. Uh, and based on cost of service as highlighted and based on your existing rates, we're going to maintain. Blocks two, three and four. And then we're going to go about adding a fifth block at a, a lower rate in order to promote economic development. Uh, and as you can see, the scenario line twenty and twenty one says the total. Uh, simulation of revenues uh on, on a monthly basis, based on cost of service. And you can see the differences here in, so this becomes the structure of the high use water rate. Um, let me stop here to see if there are any questions as it relates to this, this rate. Uh, I know we said a lot, um, so any questions?
Uh, didn't, hadn't we already approved this rate?
I think, I think we're talking about as a matter of policy prospectively, Howard, going forward, uh, is that a word?
Yes, so we, we, we've presented this in the past and I don't think there was a request for action. It was informing you of the direction. Um, but no, I know the team and staff is coming back um to inform again and request action.
Well, the action, that, that's correct. I'm sorry, Councilman Duval.
We, we took it for, didn't we do this for Project Sunshine or was that a one off and you now you want to put it into available for anybody?
So, Councilman, we, we briefed y'all and y'all approved the concept. And we were going to formally do that with this year's rate ordinance revision because Project Sunshine is not using water or sewer yet. So we knew we had the time to do that and amend the rate ordinance this one time. So thi- this is the official action of what you've already seen, Robert, we're just going back over that refreshing the memory.
But this is the deal that we agreed to, to incentivize the sunshine.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is correct.
So we, we need to do this because they got a whole lot of concrete out there expecting it.
Yes, sir. And then we don't have any other customer right now that would fall into that category. So the delay really didn't impact anything other than, you know, we had the, the, the commitment before, but this is formalizing that.
Right.
But it, but it would extend to other high use.
Yeah, if we, if we have another project sunshine.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. It absolutely would.
All right, good deal.
Okay. So moving on to your miscellaneous.
Hello, can you, can you, I, I got a quick question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ye- yes, sir.
Hi, uh, Clint, so how many more Project Sunshines can we take on before all facility upgrade? The, the expense of facility upgrades would have to be made at wastewater or water.
It's a great question, sir. It, it depends on where they would be located. Um, we, we know that uh another project sunshine or two out in Pineview. Would create some challenges from a water distribution standpoint, but because of the proximity to the wastewater collection. Uh, system and, and treatment plant, we're in good shape there to convey the waste and treat the waste. Um, the, so, so we're in better shape at that location on the wastewater side than we are on the, the water provision side. Um, in the northeast, the industrial park that the county is looking to develop near Blackwood. We're in fantastic shape on the water distribution side because we have a forty eight inch water main that traverses that park, or that property. Um, but we're not as in a, as good a shape on the wastewater provision side because it's so far away from our waste treatment plant. So that we can absorb them from a total capacity standpoint. But a lot of planning has to go into where to site those industries and how much. Uh, a heavy intensive wet industry needs and, and where they would go. So I, that's a long answer and I apologize for not being more direct, but that's about as best I can do for you.
No, I appreciate that. And I mean, as, as we treat the, the, the stormwater wastewater, I guess, the messy wastewater. Uh, I, I mean, are we going to hit D H E C standards pretty quickly uh with, with what we're allowed to put into, to the, the river shed?
Well, sir, we, we've got from a hydraulic capacity standpoint, we've got um a sixty million gallon a day rated facility. And we average about thirty six mi- million gallons a day um discharged to the Congaree River. So we've got a good bit of hydraulic capacity. We just went through an aeration upgrade that's going to increase our biological treatment capacity so that um we can handle more poundage. Um, we do know eventually we will have to upgrade our waste treatment facility, both hydraulically and from a treatment standpoint. But um we've got a good bit of capacity from a, a, a poundage loading and also hydraulic left. Um, we also impose and are very strict about our um, a- about our surcharges. And so we don't let a customer um just, just dump a, a whole lot of, uh, high strength waste on us. If they go above a certain value, then they have to pay a penalty for that, which helps fund future upgrades in terms of biological or, or loading capacity.
Right, thank you.
Robert?
Okay. So moving on to miscellaneous service fees. So what we wanted to, to, to highlight here is the fact that. Um, staff undertook an evaluation just to refresh and understand. You know, the cost associated with providing these services. Um, and as a result of understanding those costs are the existing fees that you charge, you know, adequate. So what, what are miscellaneous fees? There, there are service charges slash you, the user fees. Um, that are levied upon customers for a specific good or service for the use of, of, of public facilities. So in the case of Columbia Water, these aren't direct water and sewer user charges. But there are the services you all provide, insulation services, turn and turn off services, for example. And these fees support these services because as you're aware, if you have a turn on or off. If somebody calls, somebody has to take that call, somebody has to react and somebody has to sort. Um, that customer's need and requirement in short order. And what these charges do is try to understand the cost to provide those services, price them as such. Okay? So in, in doing so, staff looked at a, a, a few of the services or all the services that you provided. And there were recommendations to make adjustments to some. And to leave um the remainder um as they are. So for example, your current charge uh for a fire hydrant installation is eight hundred dollars. The new recommendation is sixteen hundred. For hydrant meters is two forty, uh, the new recommendation is a thousand. Um, but there's a credit of seven hundred if it's returned within um three years. Say, for example, meter replacements. Um, you're currently charging forty five dollars for like a three quarter inch to one inch. Um, but we're proposing a, a, a three hundred dollar charge. Um, for some of the charges, there is no change. Say, for example, unauthorized use fees, straight connection fee, a lock meter fee. Uh, a, a remove meter fee, all those charges, for example, will remain the same. So this is just a, 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 a listing of the existing miscellaneous charges that were reviewed. Uh, and the, the, the proposed recommendations. So in closing and wrapping up, you know, what is, what is the ax? Um, the ax is to consider the implementation of the F Y twenty two. Um, water and sewer slash Columbia Water Financial Plan. Um, consider um the implementation of the high use uh water rate. And consider the, the implementation of, of the proposed miscellaneous service charges. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity um to present to you all today. And, you know, please let us know if you have any question.
Thank you. Questions for Robert? I can't see the, can't see all, all, all the hands, uh, Mr. Duval.
Oh, Robert and Clint both, uh, that, that, that was an excellent presentation, a very, a very, uh. A lot of information in there for the public and for the council to digest. Um, one of the things that I, I appreciated Robert covering was the value of water. Uh, we are blessed in the city of Columbia to have a great source of water with both the Lake Murray coming through the Saluda River. Uh, and the Broad River coming down the, from up, up in the uh. Uh, northwest side of the state also. So we have abundant water, which a lot of people don't have. If you've been reading or hearing the news lately about the people out west. Uh, it is getting to be critical and to the point where we may not, they might not, might even not be able to run the generators. In some of the big dams that they have out there this year because the water levels are so low. So we, we are blessed to have uh these water sources. I note on our water rate. That we are still giving the first three hundred uh cubic feet at, at, at the same charge, no, no charge. Uh, for the first three hundred cubic feet, which means that if, if you use. The, the three hundred cubic feet, you'd have a um, an increase of only forty one cents over the. Previous rate that we charged for that if we adopt the new rate. And people that use the water and sewer uh at the, the first three hundred uh cubic feet. It's a, and forty five cents total. So. And a, a lot of our people are, are under those term, those uh numbers. Uh, I used to use five and six hundred cubic feet uh on McGregor. We don't, I don't use nearly that much in this apartment, but uh water in Columbia is fairly priced and it is valuable. Because we have abundant sources. So I, I think we need to continue to fund these uh water and sewer requests that the staff has done. Uh, and keep the system running efficiently.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Any other questions for, for Robert or statements? Uh, Daniel?
I just, I, I, I wrote down a bunch of questions um going through this and, and I'd like to follow up at, at the appropriate time. Obviously, you know, today we got a full agenda, but um at the appropriate time, I'd love to follow up with Robert. Uh, uh, and a little bit more to understand some of the, the dynamics there. Um, but I really appreciate what you put together. It's very comprehensive, but I'd like to. Um, schedule a time in the next couple of weeks, if we could, to, to go over to these questions.
Okay, sure. Certainly a couple of questions I had too, but also in the interest of time and that we have a lengthy agenda. Um, I, I, I was off camera briefly. Did we cover today, and usually you also show us a sensitivity analysis, looking at our population. And the ability of, 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 of folks to pay. We didn't do that this time, right? I, I don't think I saw that one chart. That's uh, uh, they included uh, uh, maybe before or what have you. But I'd be curious if we have any numbers like uh that, but I think um, I think five percent is a, is a, is a, is a win. Um, uh, going in, in the, in the right uh direction, right? I doubled down on everything Mr. Duval had to say as well, including, I think, I think some of the sanitary. Compared to one of them. Um, so no, um, thanks for the comprehensive uh report and, and recommendations, Robert. I was looking forward to seeing you. Even Bert.
No problem. Thank you all so very much.
All right. So the city manager, they're going, is that going to require action right now or what are we, what are we looking for?
No, sir. Um, it, it will be incorporated in to the, the budget recommendations. So we'll keep going for now.
And that, that includes the um, uh, the super user issue. We can handle that later. Doesn't need to be handled now?
It does, no, sir. I mean, we, we're looking for you all to approve it formally, yes, sir, but as far as in the actual budget. Um, that the water and sewer fund will incorporate the five percent.
No, I meant, I meant the, the super user rate. And that is not, there's, there's time issues there. We, we, we're, we're good. Uh, no, no, they're, they're moving forward pretty aggressively on construction, so.
Right, Clint and Missy, I guess, when we get to the point of fi- of the budget, um. The vote on the budget, are you incorporating a separate motion on the high user rate?
Those would be part of the rate ordinance, um, Mitch Wilson. So as, as the rate's adopted, then, then that will be taken care of as well. And, and in terms of timing, the mayor's, they, they are moving at unbelievably aggressive pace and um, and doing really, really well. But we, we got plenty of time still to approve for our normal budget process to get those rate adjustments in place.
Okay, super, super. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Clint, Robert. So at this time, we'll move along so that we can. Um, have enough time to get everything in the overview of um the recently approved American Rescue Plan and some recommendations. That we have for you all, mayor and council. And with that, Missy Kaufman, our budget and program management director, will start us off. Um, again, we're doing it in this order as we're building you up to the um budget, budget recommendations I find. I, I'd also add on the agenda, um, just for the sake of the public awareness. All of the funds will be covered today. I, I meant for them to be actually bulleted out on the agenda. Um, within the memo that you received. Um, within the memo that you received. As well as, um, I guess while Missy said in the sub, I would say there's been. As you know, many of you with all of your um, national contacts and colleagues. Um, through various um, organizations, you know that there is an abundance of information right now regarding. Funding, funding sources, um, the American Rescue Plan, obviously, and the direct allocation we've received as a city. And then there's also many opportunities through the Federal Appropriations Act, and so we're very, very thankful for Ralph. Um, and Deborah with Capital Edge who, you know, have served us so well for many years, but I mean, we. As a staff, our entire team, I mean, we are talking to them daily. And we are staying ahead of these potential opportunities to have uh, funds for some. Projects in the city of Columbia and infrastructure, and so. I didn't want to confuse you with everything we're presenting today, but Missy Gentry has done a phenomenal job of working with all of our different. Departments along with um, obviously our finance team and our um, Wana and the lobbyists. And so we've already submitted for several um, projects to meet certain deadlines as far as sending things. To um, the congressman and others, and so we have an email that outlines some of that for you. But I'm gonna ask, uh, Missy, go ahead and send that to you later today. We just wanted to get through. The budget presentation so that you um. Don't get confused with all the various sources. So with that, Missy's gonna be, Coffin's gonna take you through now. Our proposed budget and start with the rescue plan recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. After following um, Mr. Shealy and uh, Robert Chambers, I feel like I really need to up my game here on the conversation. Hopefully this uh, will, will continue a thread of good information and good discussion. Um, around this exciting opportunity for the city and our upcoming um, proposed budget or your, your, your proposed budget. So the, the first part of the conversation when we want to talk about is just an overview of our, of the presentation. We will, we want to uh, remind to the council of the project, of the budget timeline, um, uh. A summary of the American Rescue Plan as mentioned, as well as going through the proposed fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Uh, city manager proposed budget. We'll cover each operating fund, which will be the general fund, our parking fund, our water and sewer operating fund. Our stormwater operating fund, hospitality tax and accommodation tax. And then um, as, as has been discussed in a couple of council meetings, we, we thought we'd go ahead and bring um, forward. Um, an introduction about a special project that we're doing with uh, Bloomberg's What Work Cities? And our city budgeting for equity and recovery initiative. So just some highlights from the, of, of the conversation, of course, you know, as, as we are still in an economic uncertainty uh, around the pandemic, there is. There is some silver lining, there is some um, promising days ahead, so we, we are, we are cautiously optimistic as we. As um, as we have been proceeding, uh, our continuity of operations and continuing to provide our excellent day-to-day services to our community. Um, our city departments have not missed a beat. We're continuing to provide services day-to-day. Um, and have been and look forward to the opening of parks here in a few weeks, our park facilities uh, um, as summer is, is coming upon us. And of course, um, uh, it's always fulfilling our city's financial obligations. Uh, that's one of the most important things we feel like we can do as stewards of the city's funds and making sure that we maintain a healthy financial, um. Footprint for the city. So um, and, and, and as we've been talking through many of these conversations and having lots of conversations. Especially with our colleagues across the country as we talk about the American Rescue Plan. As, as well as the impact of COVID, um, this was a reassuring um, statement of if you're going through hell to keep going. So we're gonna keep on going and keep trudging ahead and, and make our way through together. Just to reiterate under of our budget timeline, we're here today, as Miss Wilson said, we've, we've compressed a, a, a. Usually a pretty um, lengthy budget conversation into today's conversation. With the expectations that um, just as, and you'll probably hear me say this several times today. Following today's conversation, we will be advertising the budget this week in anticipation of a budget public hearing. For May the eleventh, which is, it will be a special called meeting date, but will allow us an opportunity to get the budget um, uh, approved and, and passed in May. Um, the, the advertisement date is based on state law in order to meet our fifteen day notice requirement, so the. Um, notice will be sent out this week for advertisement next week. And then second reading and adoption will be May eighteenth. So all of the discussions with regards to our budget, both with our water and sewer discussions. That Mr. Shealy and Robert Chambers just went through with, with, um, discussed with you, as well as the budget being proposed today. Would all need to be advertised by this week to meet schedule. American Rescue Plan, this is, this will be a very high level um, conversation. Um, I'm by all means, um, not a proficient or fluent um, spokesperson for the discussion of this plan, but have. Had many conversations and then on many um, webinars, we've had many discussions with uh, National League of Cities, US Conference of Mayors. Um, thanks to US Conference of Mayors with some great conversations with Treasury, as well as uh, ICMA, MASC, GFOA. Um, all kinds of guidance and information out there um, coming forward, and of course, we can't forget our um. Um, Capital Edge and all of the help and assistance that they give to us on anything at a national level, um, and, and. And really appreciate all of their help and support and providing with us, with information timely, um, and. Definitely reliable, um, and they're always a great advocate for the city and we appreciate their support. Uh, high level overview with regards to the American Rescue Plan, the first and foremost, what we want to express and um, repeat. Is that guidance for local government, government um, financial assistance is still dependent from the US Treasury. That is very key for these funds. Um, it is, it's like waiting on the federal registry when we receive any of our federal dollars. Um, it will, it will determine for us how we, how we can use the funds as well as what any kind of reporting and requirements that we'll have. So it's very important that we um, that we um, receive this guidance. Um, also, we know at this point that the city's estimated direct allocation to Columbia um, is twenty five point nine million. Um, this will be coming straight to the city of Columbia, unlike CARES Act funds last year that went through the state. We also are, uh, have been made aware that there's an additional two point five in our HUD home fund. Um, those are subject to the HUD requirements and the HUD program, HUD program, but it is a, a direct allocation to the city, so we're, we're including it. This outline here. The local financial assistance um, funds, the twenty five point nine million. Um, it's, the act requires that it be dispersed within sixty days from being signed into law, signed into law on March the eleventh. So we anticipate getting this fund later than maybe eleventh. By then, um, guidance from Treasury should have also been received um, or anticipated. Then the act requires that the second part of the payment be received no sooner than one year from the first. We have until December thirty first, twenty twenty four to send these funds. That's specific to the, the direct allocation. HUD and home funds are, are under their own guidance and directions. They, they are not subject to the uh, Treasury guidance. Some of our other key takeaways that we have been um, been receiving um, and, and sharing with our colleagues and, and. And other discussions, Treasury guidance still is pending, again. Can't um, overstate the, that their guidance is still, is still um, pending and is important. Of course, we need Treasury um, to be, provide us with eligible uses, although there is outlined in the, in the act, what is eligible. And what's really important and key to this part of the conversation is the administration of the funds. Um, that will be definitely um, a, a significant component of this process as well. Uh, other guidance is also is that we plan for the recovery. Underlying a, a lot of the use of these funds and recovery is anticipated to. That we're returning people to work and then we're putting jobs back in place. Um, flow is smooth and smooth is fast, and it's been a phrase that's been referred to on several of these conversations. I know it. Um, um, we all like to be able to move in the fast lane on these. Um, and so the structure and the organization, how we disperse and utilize these funds will be important. Um, because that's gonna be the fastest and best, most efficient way to be able to deliver these funds, um, where they are intended to go. And then with the, with that, um, we are also advised um, to assess our needs and address our gaps. Um, and look specifically for those gaps, especially as we consider the local uh, uh, recovery funds. These are the only funds that the city is receiving directly in assistance, um, and so we are advised to use gaps and priorities not for eligible. Um, other, other programs. As you'll see in the summer coming up, there is a lot of different programs in this act, a lot of different um, funding opportunities. That cover of a number of initiatives, um, that, that city council has expressed in our community, um, so we. Uh, wanna make sure that we are, are, are spreading our funds with um, with a consideration of, um, not duplicating efforts. And of course, we take time to uh, create, create a, a weather fund plan, um, and with equity at its core. We're gonna think strategically about how to use these funds for our future needs, not only today, but also building some resiliency. And then um, we are reminded these, that these funds are one-time and we need to treat them as such, so that as we're using them for one-time. So that we're, as we're receiving them one-time, that we use them for one-time needs and one-time um, expenditures. Um, we'll, we will be required to document and provide some regular reporting on the spending is what we are anticipating. We don't know what that yet looks like. Um, that also speaks to, of course, capacity, um. For that program, but also to the eligible users, um, will be important in terms of how it's function received. As for the summary of the local government assistance, um, three hundred and sixty million, that, that's really three hundred fifty million, billion dollars. Excuse me, I'm, I'm not used to um, referring to billion in our budget conversations. Um, with the additional ten billion for coronavirus capital project funds. States are receiving the direct allocation. The city's allocation is based primarily on our HUD formulas with also a factor for um, poverty. So the city's allocation is based on that, that um, that formula. The county is also receiving a direct allocation, I believe in the ne, in the neighborhood of eight, eighty million. As far as the legislative uses that have been designated specifically under section ninety nine oh one of the ARP of the American Rescue Plan. Um, is responding to public health, um, related to COVID and its negative impacts. On those household assistance, the households, small business, nonprofits, aid and impacted this, this um, industry. Um, obviously speaking of tourism, travel and hospitality, um. We also, um, the, the act also addresses responding to workers with essential work related to um, public health and, and COVID nineteen. Um, there's also provision uh, for government services to the extent of reduction of revenue. As that relates to the city of Columbia specifically, um, this means as, as it states here, that local government due to COVID. Public health emergency relative to revenues collected and then the re, most recent full fiscal year, the local government prior to the emergency. So the city of Columbia, that means fiscal year eighteen nineteen, you'll see in our coming conversations. That fiscal year eighteen nineteen is our foundation or for basis for our recommendations uh, with regards to revenue. Um, to make investments um, in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure, as well as transfer funds to private nonprofits. That are, are designated McKenna Venti Homeless Act recipients. Funds cannot be used for pension and they cannot be used to offset a tax increase. With that guidance that was presented there, this is where the city has, uh, city managers put together a proposed use of those. Um, American Rescue Plans and Miss Wilson, and I'm sure you'll want to jump in at any point in time for these conversations. As mentioned, our basis for these allocations are, are, are being driven from um, our fiscal year eighteen nineteen revenue. Um, one of the first stated uses is regards to the recovery SE, the general loan that the city receive. Um, has, has, has received, um, our, our recommendation is to, is to basically return that loan. Um, and pay for the funds that we have, have, are obligated to refund and restore. That has a long-term impact in the sense that the um, the use of those funds would, would incur, is, is a loan. It's a, it would be a debt on to um, the fund that would be the recipient of those funds, or if it was general fund, it would be debt on the general fund. Um, um, going forward, so we, we are recommending that we pay those funds back in place of using these funds. Revenue shortfall, as mentioned, um, we use our fiscal year eighteen nineteen, um. As a, as a baseline and determine where there are shortfalls. There is still guidance pending from the um, Treasury, of course, as we've mentioned. I think a couple of times uh, now, so the guidance is still pending in terms of. Of, of how, of what the revenue um, recovery would look like. In our conversations with, with um, other entities and with um, um, some of the other organizations that we've mentioned. Uh, we're looking at things that both a, a line item of a revenue stream as well as a, a category of a revenue stream. So we have programmed these funds into our upcoming budget. Um, revenue shortfall is based in the general, our parking fund and our hospitality specifically. Um, by far, parking fund has seen the most dramatic impact with regards to um. Uh, parking revenues, uh, and we state that based on um, both projections, but also actual revenues received. And we'll get into that a little bit further as we get through this conversation. Um, the city manager is also in, including a provision for um, employee housing and premium pay. Um, to be discussed, um, um, as we move forward. And then not in any specific order or, or designated amounts, because as we are still pending the uh, guidance from Treasury. Um, and listening to city councils, specific conversations and, and referencing in prior meetings where some, certain areas have come up. Um, with regards to um, external uses, um, or even internal uses, just on specific programs administered maybe through the city. Uh, for, for housing initiatives, um, nonprofit assistance, small business support, broadband and student securities. And as we think about those and consider those, um, uh, keep in mind, we will go forward with discussions on some of the other programs. And allocations that also will be addressing some of these same areas, so we want to be cognizant of um, duplication of, of the effort. I'm gonna pause there to see if there's any comments. I know I'm kind of rapid fire discussion here, so.
Missy, thank you for getting us to this point. Obviously, this gets, you know, to the crux of, of the funding and quite frankly. Um, you know, between Missy and Jeff and I and working with the ACMs and, and. Our finance team, I mean, the numbers just really are what they are when you back into um. The debt repayment and the revenue shortfall. You know, the only thing that we, we, I guess, played with a little bit was this idea of, of premium pay. And it's called, the, the premium pay is taken from the terminology used in the act itself, so. Um, those numbers are truly based off um, the formulas that we were given to work from. Um, from FY eighteen nineteen being the baseline, and so I did not want to take any liberties. Other than knowing various categories of external uses that I knew you all were interested in. Really wanted feedback from you on, you know, how you would um, seek to. Prioritize some of those areas with the um, six point five million dollars remaining. Um, to, to use to assist in those areas, and again, uh, you know, we can't reiterate enough, and this is coming from. Ralph and all the national sources, there's just, the Treasury guidance is, is really key here. This is different than the, when obviously you all were very forward-thinking and. We were able to put some programs together internally for external use. Obviously, those are city funds, these are federal dollars, and we're gonna have to follow and um, the, the guidance as it comes out. As to how um, it's utilized and how we comply with it going forward.
Teresa, I know you bring up a good number of questions. Uh, I'll go to Mika first and then uh, Howard, but before we do that, in case one of these goes, goes, pulls some numbers up. Let me get my, after around our entire parking fund budget, and particularly, I'm interested in. Um, if in fact we're able, unable, think perfect, um, well, well, know the budget, um. We talk, are we, are we at risk of not being able to meet our, our, our debt obligations? Uh, uh, on our revenue bonds on the, I mean, what, what's the? Um, impact uh, on, on that, because obviously if, if it's um. If, if that's the issue, um, um, backing up our, our, our long-term debt obligations, then. Uh, there's no hesitancy of pushing that much into the parking fund, if that's not at risk, however. Uh, I'd, I'd probably lean in, in the direction of somebody. of the other issues towards the bottom of the list. But but nonetheless, I I'm curious about uh what's the what's the overall parking fund budget? I'm trying to remember, is it nine nine million thereabouts uh annually?
You wanna jump to that because I do think that's a question for um councils' understanding. You want to just jump to the parking fund budget and go ahead and address it?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sorry, y'all, I've been getting off of track.
No, I mean, we're gonna have to get there anyway. We we talked about this, ma'am, because it's this is a different kind of budget. We're trying to fill in gaps and explain why and go to the actual fund. But yes, sir, we can go to it right now.
Well, the the primary question was, I knew it was about a nine million dollar budget, was how does how does the the filling this gap or failure to fill this gap, how does it affect our 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 bondholders uh or or what have you? If that's not at risk, we need to have more discussion about that. But go go ahead, Missy.
This is Jeff. So, yes, we are under risk. We have issues covering meeting our bond covenants in parking. I believe Missy will be showing you the parking budget. I don't know if it shows kind of the actuals through this year. We'll have to look and we can put information back out there. But this past year and in the current year, we're not anticipating meeting bond covenants because we are not generating the revenue that we need to cover our operational costs. Um we're hopeful that we can utilize these revenues to uh and and all we're looking to do is get it back to the two thousand nineteen levels. That will still keep things kind of close, but that will be where we'll go back to our bond council and others to talk about how that's gonna affect the covenants and what the requirements on the system are. If we don't do this, we will end up having to have a parking study and that will potentially push us to have to have parking rates increased across the board. Um but that would only be going forward. Um it 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 really doesn't um help in the current year. Um and potentially the next year, I will point out, so the numbers that Missy Kaufman is gonna show you and has on that spreadsheet for parking for the ARP funds to be used, those numbers are estimates. Um so if we don't end up utilizing all of those funds, we do have through twenty twenty to utilize the, so if parking comes in and if two point three million isn't neat, I I don't have it right in front of me, but if the number for next year isn't neat and it's a smaller number, we'll have additional funds that we can roll back in that can be used for the other uh uses as designated, what once we get guidance from treasury and approval from y'all. Is that any to your question there?
And I was hopeful that the summary was gonna be helpful.
It's 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 helpful, and then we got we gotta wait for uh treasury guidance and 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 the like, uh but just with, you know, with the um significant needs of our our H tax funded organizations, our cultural uh institutions, obviously, um whatever we can do in terms of broadband, affordable housing, you know, small businesses, uh obviously, there's there's a whole lot out there and and unless, I mean, I I I a little bit discomfort of of a third of the of of the committed funding going to 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 parking. Um but we'll talk some more about that and as we as we learn as we go along. Um Ms. Devine? Yeah, it's still.
I just, um, uh, Missy, can you go back?
Sure.
Question while she's going back. So just want to make sure, so um basically, we're working with a balance of six point five million for the external uses. Um seeing as the money will be split in half, um have y'all thought through a process of um, sorry, have y'all thought through a process of um when, you know, how much would be available at what time? So we're we're y'all are looking at the allocation, but only half will be available now and another half won't be for another year.
Yes, ma'am, we are taking that into consideration and also would would be also reminding city council of that same in terms of how we allocate, um especially as we need guidance from treasury in terms of how the funds, uh you know, they they have a year to give us those funds, but if we don't receive those funds between um by June thirtieth the following year, then that could have some longer term, you know, impacts uh with regards to our financial statement. But we are taking that into consideration. Um some of the city uses, you know, maybe um especially as we're talking about the the current budget um versus those things that are based on prior years, showing up our 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 prior years.
Okay. Um and, you know, I've I've told everybody, I've spoken to twenty five million, sounds like a lot of money, but in the scheme of things, it's not. And I think, of course, looking at where we have internal needs and and this, it it really elevates the fact that it's really not a lot of money and goes very fast. Um I would, you know, definitely suggest that as we look at the external um allocations, uh consider um not just an official process, but maybe a part of that process be some input um from the community on on some of the priorities. I know um several people have already done that, so um if we could maybe look at that as well. And then the last thing I would suggest is um so that our money goes as far as possible, I certainly would suggest that we uh look at, and I know that our, well, I won't say no, um I imagine that our process, um because we are used to this, is is probably, um even though we're still waiting on on treasury guidance, is is probably gonna be a little bit more defined and official because we typically do this. Um but I would suggest if we could um maybe seek um some kind of uh collaboration with the county in some areas, for instance, they are already doing the rental assistance. Um so certainly, although we could do something similar, there there really isn't, we don't need to be duplicating efforts. Um but if we are looking at gaps, um figuring out where the gaps within our community, particularly the city, are um so that as we're allocating funds, if the county is doing something, uh we don't duplicate that effort, but we also talk to our partners on the county uh to ensure that city residents get um fair uh access to those funds, although they live in the incorporated area.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Devine, and we have um we there are a few different um surveys that are out there as well, you know, between um uh uh economic development, opportunity has done some surveys, community development, of course, is doing surveys, especially related to the HUD fund. So we we have a number of input methods that have already occurred that that could be useful um for that for that thing, for that guidance, as you mentioned, that that is important in terms of assessing gaps. And you're right, the the whole need to not to spread our funds according to gaps where there aren't uh available uses is is key to this discussion.
So and Missy, we've got some input as well. I'll share with you. I know Howard, Will and I spoke at a neighborhood meeting and afterwards I got a very lengthy email from the community. Apparently, after we left, they they did talk about what they'd like to see, so I'll forward that and I've gotten some um from others. I would also encourage us to look at, I mean, there are several uh very well organized grassroots nonprofits who are doing great work in the community that aren't always weren't always on our radar and have never been part of our system of getting community promotions or anything else. And so I I certainly would want us to get input from them because they are dealing with things every day in the community and they know where some of the gaps and some of the needs are, so we uh could work with them, not just to get the money into the community, but also to make sure that um that they are part of the process too.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Ms. DeValle and then uh Mr. Davidson, Mr. Reckon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh a lot of my questions were answered when you discussed the parking fund because I was looking at the hospitality fund. There again, those funds are gonna be splitting into two years. Uh my my thought on the hospitality was to try to get as much money as we could back into the organizations uh by using the H tax funds out of the ARP as a backstop. Hopefully, the the collections of the H tax itself are gonna be going up, and I think they might have gone up a little bit more than we had anticipated. We might have collected more than we'd anticipated this year. Um so I I think the the question is, how much of of this can be used um to shore up the H tax rather than a direct expenditure uh on projects in the H tax?
So, um, could you ask, I was going, you asking if it was di- direct expenses or the revenue? We were treating it as the revenue as a as basically a transfer in. That's part of the guidance that we're still taking from treasury in terms of what we've discussed and would we be treating it as a, it's important in terms of how the financials would be, how it ends up being recorded, if we're able to treat it as a grant so that we can transfer and enter the fund and then it's a funding use of that system, if you will.
What would you use half of that four point eight million in in the budget year that we're talking about now, twenty one, twenty two?
So what we have included in the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two for our H tax is the one point seven for this year. Um the other amounts are already in the fund, so we would basically be helping to shore up where the the forecast of where we are today and this year's funding and of course the prior year. Just basically building a reserve.
Okay.
And it may help. When we get to the H tax fund, Mr. DeValle, um obviously, I mean, I we understand where, you know, where you are and and what you all want to do with shoring up for the groups. I think we're trying to strike a balance as to getting, making sure the fund is healthy in the years ahead as well as, you know, your ability potentially in the years ahead to do some of the things you have mentioned you wanted to do pre-COVID, whether it is an H tax bond, um et cetera, so.
All right, uh Sam and Daniel.
Sam, you're on mute.
But we can read your lips.
All right, that my uh my my suggestions aren't too different from what I'm hearing now. Um even if we partner with folks, some of it, we could maybe use a seed dollars for those areas where we may not have enough to do what we want to do anyway, but we could help uh those organizations that um that are pretty much trying to do some of the things that we like to do and can't do. The other thing is, um, I'm I'm hoping we can do as much as we can um in partnering with or helping to support small business initiatives uh citywide. Uh but then, you know, to be honest with you, there are some areas where we probably would benefit if we really target to help small businesses trying to either get off the ground or small businesses just trying to grow and maintain. That's all.
Mr. Reckon? You know, I think everything everybody said is is worthwhile for discussion, but uh I feel like we really need to look towards and and I would look to Ms. Wilson and and the staff. We we we've got equipment needs, we've got shot spotter expansion needs, we've got all these internal needs that we need to take care of, and I I think we need to to focus it inwards um as much as we can and take care of these needs to make sure that our staff and and all of our services are being delivered because they're based on citywide needs and um services. And I think we ought to look to see what else we need internally first before we go out. There's a lot of recovery money out there for all types of businesses and nonprofits and everybody else uh through other grant opportunities. I do think we need to look internally first, and I I'd like to see some more recommendations from staff on what we could use these funds for as we get more information.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to do that.
And um, no, thank you. Any other questions? Uh and again, my um my most significant concern is obviously, we we have, we we run a a tight ship and I'm I'm thankful of the work our staff does. Uh this does also represent a a significant um maybe a historic opportunity to make some really strong moves in some way ways that matter. I agree with Tameka, there's a whole lot of great grassroots work going on out there. We can support that in the interest of our citizens, we need to do that. Um but the two um particularly areas stand out to me that we have an opportunity to make strides here, and that's in 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 working with our 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 public partners and our nonprofit and for profit partners, for that matter, in delivering broadband uh to to people of of this community. Uh digital divide is real, we saw it, and um um in more ways uh from education to to healthcare, to just economic stability more than we ever have. And then um uh obviously, affordable housing, um affecting every community um across this country and but Columbia is our our primary concern, that this represents an opportunity uh to really stand up some long term efforts uh in the interest of posterity and economic prosperity in those spaces, those stand out to me. And I and I I raised the issue of of H tax, I'm speaking specifically um about um about getting monies to these arts organizations that have weathered the storm significantly, not necessarily had the opportunity to participate as much in some of the efforts we stood up collectively as a group uh last year. Uh some of them are 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 hanging by a thread and that it's important for us uh to try and um and and support those organizations and make sure they're able to weather the storm as well. Um so we'll we'll all have more opportunities to discuss them, but I I wanted to continue to lift up of those in in particular broadband, affordable housing and and uh working with our H tax organizations, getting them um up and strong and running again as the economy comes back.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. McDowell.
Yes, I uh I don't, I certainly don't want to beat the drum, but I'm gonna beat it because I've been beating it continuously. Um I think the services and whatever we do has to be, it has to be driven uh with a human consciousness that is appropriate to whatever that cause is. Um I've got a, I've got an issue with firefighters' equipment. Uh I keep harking on that because there are firefighters that are in in need of new equipment and um I would certainly hope and we I may certainly be off the beaten path, but of course, I think it's necessary that if we're going to do anything, it has to be, it has to be driven with a kind of human consensus and um these firefighters need this equipment. Rate of cancer uh relative to firefighters' equipment is very, very important, and I keep raising that issue issue. But I think the a large part of that has to be with that human dimension, that uh if we're gonna do anything, it has to be human driven, human dynamic driven, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I think we're um. Let's let's keep keep moving and.
Yes, sir, we will, and I guess as we move into the more specific um discussion of the funds, just recognize that the budget's imbalanced by utilizing these proposed um numbers here, particularly as it comes to the general fund, the parking fund, the hospitality tax. So just keep that in mind, you know, I I hear you loud and clear about wanting um all the guidance we can give and and surveys and getting seeking input from the public on the external uses of the six point five. If this is the breakout that you agree to, um obviously, I can always tell you other ways to use that internally. I did not want to assume or nor come to you with a a recommendation that only um use the funds internally. So this was about the best we could get to, and again, it's it's truly based off trying to um get our budget back at at a minimum to the way it it was and hope for some redundancy, some sustainability and just quite frankly, a little cushion um going into those fiscal years, twenty two, twenty three, et cetera, so.
You did, you guys exactly, exactly what what you needed to do.
Okay.
And that, no, this is exactly where we need to start. And uh I mean, so, no, you got you on point, and I think we we're gonna have to figure out as we give you positive, meaningful input. And, uh, I mean, so, no, you're on point. And I think we, we're going to have to figure out as we give you positive, meaningful input to ask some of the important questions. There'll be some places here, I'm sure there'll be some opportunities for movement and some that just won't be, um, but, but we, I think we just need to Throwback very specific recommendations as to what we might want to see more or less of, but you know, you guys did a great job pulling this together.
Okay. Yes, sir. So Missy, why don't you, um, try to, you know, expedite some of these additional slots now that I think the council has a flavor for what, What our basis is.
Okay, I'll put on the, uh, fire hose, uh, method here. So, okay, the next few slides are really just Of the ARP and bringing to attention, um, some areas of interest. Um, there's several other, um, programs that aren't highlighted here, but these we know would be of interest. There's $10 billion in the, in for, um, local, the local government assistance that for capital projects. It's specifically related to broadband. So this is also addressing our, our broadband needs. Um, rental housing, there's various components related to rental housing, emergency rental assistance is mentioned in Richmond County is receiving 12.5 and then another 9.5 Coming as well as some other funds that are, aren't listed here specifically, um, as Ms. Devine mentioned in terms of coordinating with the county, um, on these funds. Also, um, and, and mentioning too, some of these programs coming up, some are either going straight to the state Or other, uh, or other agencies, but they are definitely funds that will be coming into our community, um, in a variety of fashion. So we want to make sure we're staying, Staying aware and abreast of how they are being utilized within our community. So emergency housing voucher, um, through HUD, um, and also some additional funding for housing, our counseling. Many of these programs we're all aware of and familiar with. Um, the city's, the, the home funds that will be coming through the HUD is mentioned, those will be 2.5 million, um, dollars. These actually have a, a use time of, uh, fiscal year 2025, so it's a little longer date. Uh, it does have a little different, um, direction than our normal home funds, but I'm sure Ms. Sahid and her team Will be able to address those as that, as that moves forward. Uh, homeowner assistance program, alternate allocation going straight to the state, uh, 9.9 billion. An additional rental and housing assistance, this is specifically related to water, um, assistance program. This, these funds look at a health and human services, $500 million. This will be helping specifically individuals with their water, food, fuel, um, these are not funds the city has access to, but of course it's funds that our customers would have access to, um, as well. Um, of course, we can't forget the relief to individuals and families. Um, individuals, we will be receiving, uh, 14,000, $1,400 per taxpayer and an additional $1,400 per dependent. As well as also child tax credits that will be coming through, um, in various outlets related to child tax credit, um, additional paid and sick leave. Um, this is also will be helpful for, that's also, uh, helpful for small business support with relation to the family and sick, uh, um, family, um, paid sick and medical leave As well as the, um, unemployment relief. Um, and, and nonprofits will be able to participate in that program as well. Transportation, the airport, um, provisions as well as FTA, um, claiming that the CMRTA is also receiving some additional portion of these funds. So again, funds that are coming into the community that, that the city doesn't necessarily involve with, but they are coming to our community. Uh, FEMA disaster and disaster assistance, the city does participate in some of these programs as well. As mentioned, some of these programs Are available to the city by way of competitive grants. So some of the FEMA grants will be competitive, um, disaster assistance, um, funeral assistance for individuals. Uh, the firefighter, uh, grants and safer firefighter hiring grants, the city does, um, has participated in both of these programs. I'm sure we would take advantage of the same opportunity, um, with a competitive grant and then emergency management performance grant. Nutrition programs, SNAP, WIC, um, um, EDP as well. So there's also nutrition programs. There's also a variety of programs that are assisting food banks. Um, and food provisions that will be addressing the different food insecurity in our community as well, that do not come directly to the city, but will be received by several of the organizations that the city has partnered with on some food insecurity projects. Um, as mentioned, the Komavi supplemental food program, that's specifically related to senior nutrition, nutrition, um, the emergency food shelter and then the, uh, USDA's child and adult care programs, Um, which is also assisting, um, for food provision for, um, for those that are in, uh, ha- uh, housing shelters. Um, next, there's also the arts, humanities, museums and libraries. These are also funds going directly to the state that will be assisting the arts organizations That will be assisting the humanities organizations, um, so then also too, that will be assisting libraries and museums. So, and those are also of interest to our, our council, um, and to our community. Um, that, again, that's a high level overview, um, and by far is not, is not comprehensive, but certainly areas of interest to our, to our community and to our council.
Would you, would you go back one slide, Missy?
Certainly.
So some of the national programs, oh, um, obviously these are, um, this money goes to the state and, and as it says here, uh, competitive grants. Are there some efforts that we can stand up to maybe help some of our local organizations participate in that and maybe in lieu of H tax dollars?
I, I, I think that's a, a great approach. So we have talked about that with regards to, you know, we did a, um, coalition last year with, um, No Way and, and Central Carolina Community Foundation for establishing, helping to assess some capacity to some of these organizations to seek these dollars similar to the way our ABO does with assisting small business. Take advantage. I think there are some infrastructure in place that together AC has done some work in this area. We can certainly, um, look, I know they have done a survey of nonprofits. We can certainly, Um, look into that a little bit further to see. It would be a valuable opportunity for these organizations to be able to apply for these funds, But also making sure that they're, they're submitting, you know, strong application, um, for this. What's not listed here is the shutter venue, um, grant. That's also out there and is available. I know that is also being shared among our, a number of our nonprofits That normally would take advantage of the hospitality tax grants as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. So, uh, development of our budget, just as mentioned, you know, the, the city manager's focus is always just continuing our operations, especially as we were, You know, a year ago when we were faced with this, we were uncertain, um, still some uncertainties, but, um, have, have, um, Seen some progress and look forward, uh, to a, a brighter future, continuing our, to provide our, uh, day-to-day services and fulfilling our financial obligations. Which is, as mentioned, all of these are, are underlining, um, guiding principles. For uses of the American Rescue Plan funds, in terms of how they would support the city, not just today, but also helping strengthen us, um, for our, um, 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 for, for future and resiliency. Budget drivers, we know more than we did last year. Our department's budgets, um, were, um, submitted this year. They were given the same guidance. Um, if you recall, as we've having, uh, some recent budget conversations, the departments were asked to prepare their budgets within, using the same allocation. They had the current year. Um, their current year budget was based on their FY, the fiscal year 18, 19 actuals. So as of today, that means these are, um, budgets that are using, uh, two-year-old financial information, um, to build out more forward. Um, coming into three years by the time we end this coming fiscal year. There are some adjustments when we get to those, we move forward. Um, personnel budgets were, were pretty much left as they were, um, with some adjustments for, um, Positions, um, and moving forward. And of course we are holding current service levels and maintaining existing programs, not really, um, looking at any expanded or new programs, But being able to provide the services that we have. We did have a very compressed, but a focused budget process. Um, we've asked departments to think about how they have gained efficiencies and, and, Um, how they are able to deliver services from altered work arrangements. Um, also made sure we were trying to capture some shortfalls and gaps in services and being able to prioritize those. Um, the budget is built around some of those prioritized areas. Um, she went through already with regards to water and sewer and stormwater. And of course focusing on priority, uh, maintaining our service delivery. Um, and we are continuing to monitor and are, are anticipating or prepared to amend our budget in the coming months As we have more information, um, available to us. Our total proposed budget is $376 million. That's about a 20 million increase over the current year, um, from where we are today. The majority of that coming from, um, our ARP funds, but also our water and sewer funds. Um, the general fund is 155 million with stormwater. I mean, our water and sewer actually now being our leading budget of 182 million, um, being now our largest budget. Of course rounding that up, um, our enterprise fund includes water, our water and sewer fund, our, our stormwater fund and our parking fund. Um, and then rounding our special revenues with these, uh, hospitality tax and accommodations tax, these together make up our operating budget of the city. General fund revenues, um, we did see some progress or some good, um, some hopeful, um, Information with regards to our revenue. Um, our total budget is 155 million proposed for the city, for the general fund. This is an increase of 18 million, or roughly 13%. Um, from the revenue perspective, that's $3.3 million or 2.6% over the current year budget. Um, and I'm, I want to stress again, that's over current year budget. If we, um, if you refer to the packet of information that was, uh, attached on your agenda with regards to the budget memo. Um, our overall budget revenues, um, are still below, coming in lower than where we were pre-pandemic, but definitely, um, progressing better than we, we were Thinking we would be, um, a year, a, a year ago when we were looking at this situation. Our property tax and loss revenues are actually coming in better than expected. But business licenses and franchise, what we do know, um, is that they are, they still seem to be, um, below where they should be at this time. But still are known as both business license and franchise fees are not due, um, frank, business licenses have just been, are still coming in. Franchise fees, um, we do get some indications that those are not coming in. Those don't come in until the fiscal year. So it really will be, um, the end of the fiscal year before we really know how we are, are ending this, ending this year, um, both with regards to revenues and our expenditures. Uh, the majority of our increase in the budget really is coming from these transfers and one thing that has been, and we'll talk about this as we get onto the next slide with regard to expenditures. Um, but we, uh, were able to incorporate into the general fund a return of our capital lease program. As you recall, That was one of the primary expenses that we suspended in the current fiscal year. Um, this program is what we use to replace and replenish our, um, rolling stock primarily in the general fund. Um, that's a key and that is a, that's a, a, a major initiative to be able to return back to the city's budget and back to operation. Um, our, I'm sure our operating departments will be much relieved to see us be able to get back to that replacement schedule. Um, we have incorporated into this budget, um, 1.6 million from American Rescue Plan. Um, we brought to you in our last conversation, we reviewed, um, the installment purchase revenue bond, Um, proceeds. Um, there's a number of initiatives that are included in the installment purchase revenue bond that's been discussed with you. Um, the, the items that specifically have a budgetary impact are reflected in the budget and that would be this, um, We have incorporated funds for the implementation and first year support of the security camera upgrades, the much anticipated security camera upgrades. Um, very excited to see that process moving forward. We've also restored the, uh, transfer from the hospitality tax, um, uh, to 3.7 million, um, As well. Um, combined of these funds, this is what is able to support, uh, our ability to be able to return the capital lease program. On the expenditure side, um, as mentioned, um, budgets remain relatively flat from the current fiscal year and they're using 18, 19 as a, a, actuals as their baseline. Um, where there are increases, those were basically, um, increases outside of personnel, um, what a personnel adjustment, um, would be increasing. It would be due to Um, annual contract adjustments and schedules, um, for instance, our, our Microsoft, um, enterprise license, um, that's in the IT budget along with some additional cloud solution software that was added To help us with the, um, a lot of the ability to be able to operate virtually, but also our, our emergency communications, our CAD system had an upgrade that's recently been there on city council's approval. Um, that will have, um, some, and also some scheduled replacements that are, uh, requested there. The citywide election is also reflected in the budget. That's a, um, one-time expense that, um, Obviously it fluctuates as there is an election. Um, our recycling contract has been brought up. That's a significantly increase of $250,000 in the budget. It's been, It has been an expense in this year of that amount, but, but it has not been reflected in the budget of that amount, so the budget now reflects that contract. Um, full cost that has been a growing increased cost, um, as we are moving forward with our recycling. That's a indicative of The industry, um, and not something unique to Columbia. There's also funding that we need to incorporate into the department's budget, um, for a rate increase for retirement System increases that we expected as well. What's not listed here is, um, the capital lease that was, um, also mentioned, um, I felt to mention, put it here on the slide, but The capital lease program that, that listed, um, as mentioned, that'd be the, the replacement program, um, we are, with the $9 million, some of the equipment that would be purchased would be a, a new ladder truck Or a replace, a much needed replacement ladder truck, um, a fire engine as well as our patrol cars, um, garbage trucks and other, uh, equipments, um, bucket trucks, Other heavy equipment as well as some of the replacement rolling stock for our, our general fund department. Moving on to water and sewer, I want to spend a lot of time here, so a lot of that's been covered. The total budget is 182 million with an increase of 13.8 or 8%. Um, it does incorporate the 5%, 5.02% rate increase as presented. Some of those revenues are also coming from the project sunshine. It does allow us to maintain our 2.0 debt coverage, um, which is, um, a, a longstanding target of, of the city for our financial, um, strength. Water and sewer fund expenditures, uh, that rate study, um, or the rate increase and those, uh, projected revenues, uh, helped to support a 120 million capital improvement, improvement program. As you recall, That was the stated goal for our capital improvement program for a number of years, just to be able to do 120 every year with regards to our improvements. With 40 million for water, um, improvements and 80 million for wastewater improvements. It utilizes 16 million in cash from the system or remaining coming from, um, or, or those would be budgeted cash reserves. The remaining being bonds and, uh, the proceeds. Of course, the, um, rate increase also covers the debt service for those bonds, um, and our debt service schedule, uh, now is at 42.9 million. That's collective of all the active debt, um, on the, on the system and, and kind of, and, and reflects 24% of the budget. And then we have also, we've retained the, the, um, general fund transfer at the same levels of 4.1 million. Uh, with regards to stormwater budget, um, it is proposed at 15.6 million, an increase of 1.5 million, right at 1.6 to 11%. It does, uh, it does assume, um, the re, uh, the resuming of the rate adjustments In accordance to a rate structure that was adopted, I think that was actually 2018, not 2016, for a five-year, um, rate plan. It was suspended last year during COVID. Um, and we are proposing to return back to that schedule. Um, it would increase the, um, equivalent residential unit on a residential, um, Rate from 13.32 dollars to 14 dollars and 15 cents. It's an increase of 83 cents, 83 cents a month, um, or 6%. It is, um, this rate of course supports the $93 million in stormwater improvements that was proposed for this five-year plan With 11.5 million in capital projects for this coming year. You have a, um, a list of those proposed projects in your, in your, um, budget package as well. With regards to the parking fund, um, the proposed budget is 9 million, um, with that 1.3 million or 70% of the current, uh, increase of the budget. Um, projected revenues are still below 18, 19, um, and we could use 2.7. So, um, without those funds, you can see that the parking fund budget would be at a deficit, um, without there being, um, the, in the use of the ARP funds. Um, these funds are allowing us to be able to restore some of our, um, our, our operations, but also allow us to be able to adjust the maintenance priorities. Um, to be able to do some of them, um, to be able to keep our garages, not to, to be, not just be able to keep our garages open, but also, um, keeping them functioning And also keeping them maintained so that they are safe and inviting and welcoming to our public to use them. Um, again, this is just the parking fund budget. Uh, you can see that 31% of the budget is for debt service, um, related to the parking fund, um, and includes, which is a $2.8 million, um, Service schedule on existing debt. The H, the hospitality tax budget, um, it's an increase of 4.2. The eight, the hospitality tax budget, um, it's an increase of four point two or fifty-seven percent over the current year. We are pleased that revenues are coming in better than we had anticipated for the hospitality tax, but wanted to remind you that they are still below the pre-pandemic collections. We do rest like the use of the, uh, of the American Rescue Plan funds. Um, as previously mentioned, we are, we have, we have incorporated, we've included, um, hospitality tax revenues of, um, our one point seven million of ARP funds in this proposed budget. Um, the hospitality tax budget is broken out by, um, existing debt of two point seven. We've restored the general fund transfer to three point seven. Um, we've also incorporated, um, has been brought to city council's discussion, um, incorporation of the, um, repairs to the, uh, much needed repairs to the five-point fountain that the city owns in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, funding for pre-construction work and design at Family Park rehabilitation of one point five. As we talked about, um, in the past, that was one of the other programs that we suspended, um, as a result of the pandemic. Um, we are, we are anticipating that with the, um, continued improvement we are seeing with the hospitality tax, that we'll be able to proceed with that work, um, and have incorporated, um, um, one point five million for the pre-construction work and design. That would be, um, um, before we actually issue the, um, debt, um, and, and repair the rehabilitation of this much loved and, and needed work at this, at, at Family Park. Next, finally, also the allocation, the hospitality tax grant program is three point four million. That's an increase of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in terms of what's programmed in the budget. Um, this is not taken into account if there's any reserves or surplus available for allocation, um, in addition to the budget. It is an increase over the current year, we have made, we staff have made no recommendations about how city council would allocate those funds, um, but just wanted to bring them forward as a, as a whole amount and there will probably need to be future conversations about how to allocate those funds and how city council, um, may move forward. We are anticipating releasing an application, um, for those funds, um, but still need conversations about the directed, um, allocation. With regards to the accommodations tax, the budget is one point five million. It's a modest increase of fifty-seven thousand, right at fifty-eight or three point four, nine percent. It's, um, it is also hit by the pandemic, so we are not at, we still are not at, we are not at pre-pandemic levels of revenue yet. Um, it, those, with the way those funds come in from the state quarterly, it's really a little bit harder to gauge sort of where we are today. But so far, we are, we are making budget, we are meeting our target, but we are still not where we were pre-pandemic. And again, like with hospitality tax, we have not made a specific allocation other than those allocations directly stated by state law. With uses of accommodation tax, the first, um, allocation in state law is twenty-five thousand dollar transfer to the general fund with the remaining ninety-five percent, uh, uh, broken out by thirty percent for advertising and promotion, sixty-five percent for tourism related. Um, city council typically allocates those, um, for, um, specific organizations. We do have to utilize a, a committee for that program, we will reengage that committee here before the June thirtieth, um, timeframe. And then of course, five percent for general purposes, uh, city council has also directed those allocations in the past as well. Or is prepared to do that, um, going forward too. Um, that, I'll, I'll stop there, pause there with regards to the budget. Um, I know that was a lot of information and still probably a lot of questions regarding the actual budget part of that. Um, hopefully this accompanies, um, the information that you had in the packet, but, um, also if there's any comments, welcome you to make or any other questions that the city council may want to have before we move to the next topic.
Any questions or comments to Missy? All right, let's keep it, let's keep it moving then, Missy.
Okay. Next, we wanted to bring up the city budgeting for equity and recovery, uh, initiative. This is a Bloomberg, or a, a What Work Cities program that the city was, um, accepted into. We are one of thirty cities participating across the country in this initiative. It, it's focusing on applying an equity lens through the city's budgeting process. Um, we are working through, with What Work Cities, we are working with, uh, technical assistance, um, and other, uh, uh, along with peer-to-peer, meaning the other cities that are participating in the program. We have specific technical guidance from GFOA as well as some other providers that are assisting us with this work. Um, one of the, the first approach that the city is, specifically is taking is we will be working on defining what equity means to the city as an organization and in our program. Um, obviously this is a, an important area and focus of our city council and our city. So having a, 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 a definition that we all work from is very important and, and, and foundational in our work, that we are hoping to work collectively on, on defining what equity means to the city. Um, from there, we will also be working on the turn the curve indicator, um, through this initiative. That basically is, um, identifying an init, an, an equity indicator or a financial indicator that indicates, will indicate to us that we are reaching a result that the city desires to achieve through this effort. And we'll also be incorporating, um, this, uh, the equity lens as a part of our priority-based budgeting module that we've discussed in the past. Uh, we, we were a little suspended on that program with COVID, but we will be reviewing that work through this initiative. Um, and we'll be bringing some of that discussions more to our departments along with other stakeholders as we carry out this initiative. This project timeline is really between, it started last October and goes through September, um, with the supportive work. That is something that is foundational as we proceed, um, um, and, and move forward in, in the city. Any questions there?
Any questions, Missy?
Okay. The last thing I will bring up again is just a reminder that the budget that we talked about, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Um, I heard you say the, define and what diversity is or equity is. Will you do that in its, its staff related when you define what that is? Will there be input from other folk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so there has not been a work in definition for what that is as it relates to our city.
No, um, I think there are certainly, uh, concepts and, and, and maybe individualized definitions and efforts and work. I know that through this work, through this project, and as we look at our colleagues around the country that are, um, doing this work, most, most, most have started with, um, defining what equity means to them specifically. So we thought that it was important to be able to do that here, especially the, we have a number of initiatives, I think, in the city that are addressing and related to the equity within our community. Um, and so working from a, 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 a common viewpoint can only further move us along in that work and help us to better bridge that divide and be able to make sure we are addressing those gaps.
All right.
And it's really looking introspectively, Reverend McDowell, um, I, I know a lot of times when we hear, you know, the big equity is, it's such a, a big thing for people to grasp globally and as a community, but we want it to start, um, internally in the way that we approach our work. So I just wanted to make that little bit of a distinction that we're, we're trying to start with ourselves as well with how we're, um, going about our business.
Well, that's, that's great, and I think it ought to, I think it should be, ought to be, an internal movement and an internal, uh, definition of what it, what it, what it is.
Yes, sir.
But it's also important, I think, once we decide internally of what the group decides on what that definite, definition consists of, it would certainly be good to draw in others to make sure that that definition is a collaborative effort and not, uh, not anything else.
Yes, sir.
I guess, that's my whole point, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions for Missy?
So this is, we're, just to enclose, um, just a false thank you to city council, of course, city manager. Um, this is definitely a, a team effort, um, and to our departments, um, in bringing this work forward. And so we're, we're pleased to be able to bring this to you. The, just a reminder that everything we discussed today, um, at this point is being proposed for advertisement this week for a budget public hearing and first reading on May the eleventh, which again would be a special call meeting. I just want to make sure we, we stress and reiterate that so that we are all in the same accord, um, before we finish up today's conversation. And thank you again.
Missy, thank you so much. I know this is, we all had to step out of our comfort zone a little bit to get through this process in a, um, reimagined way, but I think we tried to do our best and I really appreciate Missy's hard work, um, and Jeff and Jan and everyone. But you know, the, our finance professionals are amazing and I appreciate their, um, thoughtfulness about such an important part of, of city government and it's our budget and what our citizens expect. So with that, we will move forward with the advertisement unless you all are directing us otherwise.
All right, thank you, Teresa.
Yes, sir. Um, Mayor Benjamin, we, um, recognize that I know there's some national news, um, pending and, and we just wanted to reassure you all that, um, we have been in preparation for that, whichever way it may go today with the Chauvin verdict and, um, just getting lots of messages here about that, as I'm sure you all are as well. So we'll continue along unless you direct us, um, otherwise we can move into the incident agenda, item seven through twenty-nine.
Moving, yeah.
The move.
I can, any discussion?
Just Mr. Mayor, just, um, very happy to see, um, the progress on moving forward with the disparity study and, and to Councilman McDowell's point earlier, I think a lot of the things that we're working on, disparity study, uh, uh, equity survey that should be done soon and as well as the other conversations I know we had, we, we are making great strides and I'm excited to see, uh, this team that's assembled, it's very impressive.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, ma'am, just to back up for just one moment, will there be an opportunity for any of us to be a part of that conversation on equity?
Yes, sir, of course, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Move the previous question.
All right, Kurt, please call her on.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Aye, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa.
Yes, sir, the zoning planning matter here is a first reading, um, with the, again, Unipat Development Ordinance adoption, um, or our city, uh, new city of Columbia zoning map. I know Krista has, um, given you all reminders about the timeline.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Would the previous question, Kurt, call her all?
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Sam, you muted.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Well, um, hardy, thank you for the hard work and time and patience and collaboration on this, I would, aye.
Thank you, thank you all. Moving into ordinance's first reading, item thirty-one, ordinance number two thousand twenty-one zero one zero, granting an encroachment to the Municipal Association of South Carolina for the use of the right-of-way area.
A move approval.
Don't move.
You can't move for the Taj Duval, you can't do that.
So move.
I have no financial connection with that.
I know, I just had to. Move the previous, move the previous question, Kurt, call her all.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item thirty-two, ordinance number two thousand twenty-one zero one one, amending ordinances two thousand fourteen zero three two and two thousand twelve zero five nine, granting encroachment to the University of South Carolina for use of the right-of-way area of the fifteen-hundred block of Green Street and eight-hundred block of Pickens Street.
Second, discussion, would the previous question, call her all?
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item thirty-three, ordinance number two thousand twenty-one zero two zero, granting an easement to Dominion Energy, South Carolina Inc. Along a portion of city-owned property identified as the Richland County TMS number is out.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question, would the previous question, Kurt, call her all?
Good morning.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item thirty-four, ordinance number two thousand twenty-one zero two eight, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park for Project Katava, nine nineteen Katava Avenue, three eighteen Lincoln Street and three twelve Lincoln Street in Richland County. Um, I do believe that, um, some, some who may, if you have any questions, in other words, we
Yeah.
were holding for, I think, Mayor Cobble and Adam Beck, um, were in the hold-in room, if there are any questions.
Sure, well, let's get the discussion period first, is there a motion? Um, I'm, I'm of approval, is there a second? We can't wait, yeah. All right.
This is for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right. Second.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Divine, second, but she, I think she'd, I think she'd happily take your replacement as a second, so, so. Discussion, we got a good discussion period, let's do it. All right, um, you see you have, you have Bob and who else?
Adam Beck.
Okay, all right. And, um, I saw Daniel had a question, would that maybe for staff or for the applicants, Daniel?
Well, I, I, I think it starts from staff, um. You know, I haven't talked to anybody about this project, so I'm not sure who, who's bringing this forward, but I was a little concerned, uh, about several issues that weren't addressed in our packet, which one was safety. Um, the other, what was brought up at the county about the, my understanding, this was a solicitation as part of it for public parking and it seems like there's only, from what I've read, only eleven spots that are public parking included in this, but yet there's no mention of any of that in our briefing packet. Um, so I'm, I'm concerned about those issues, um, for sure and, and would like to understand from our staff, did, did we miss something, did we not get some information? Um, you know, a, as I said, I hadn't been contacted, so I don't know who the lobbyist is for this. I'm assuming it's, it's Mayor Cobble since I'm here, he's on the line, but, um, just out of curiosity, do we have any information on, um, the safety measure and how that's going to be deferred around those tracks? Along with what was the, the agreement, original agreement around public access parking?
Uh, Ryan, are you on? I know we sought some answers to some of that, I'm not sure, um, regarding the parking, Mr. Rickaman, um, what responses did, I know Ryan forwarded everything. What responses did, I know Ryan forwarded everything that he got when he, when he.
Mr. Daniel, you say this is part of a public parking solicitation? What do you mean? What does that mean?
My understanding is part of the, the reason that the county, and I'm, this is what I'm told. That's why I'm asking the question. I couldn't find any of the information in our packet, that there was supposed to be a greater portion of public parking as part of the incentive that was granted.
I'm not familiar with that aspect of it, Mr. Rickaman. Ryan or?
And the county has overwhelmingly approved this, haven't they? When, when a pretty significant vote by county?
County's approved up to two readings so far.
Like nine, two, right? So I assume they met their, their request or their, whatever their demands were.
It's come through the standard, you know, commercial development incentive process. I will say with regards to, you know, the public parking, while it wasn't mentioned heavily in the, the application that was sent out, there was an attached presentation that outlines, there, there will be probably 11 onsite public parking spaces provided as part of the structured deck for this. And then there will also be 17 parallel parking sites added along the street fronts of Lincoln and Catawba, I believe, as well as part of the pedestrian and, and right-of-way improvements that will be required when they install the sidewalks there. But that's, that's the information.
Also public parking?
Now, is that obit street or a public street? I'm confused.
Pu, public street. That's, that's along Lincoln and Catawba streets. So that the streets adjacent to the south and west of where the project will be.
Right. Let me ask you this. The issue of safety, was that considered, thought through at county, on the county side?
I, I know it's been brought up and, and discussed and I, I believe even some of the neighborhoods have, have kind of had some concerns about it and have been in discussions with developers. So I know it's been a topic of conversation, wasn't involved in a lot of those or in any of those conversations. So that may be something, you know, that Mayor Cobal or Mr. Beck could speak better to. It's my understanding that some safety concerns were brought up because of the railroad proximity and that the developers have made some changes to address that. But they, they would need to provide you specific.
The, Mr. Beck and Mayor Cobal on or, or no?
Mr. Beck is on and he's able to speak at the time.
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear as well about the, about the railroads. Cause I know we got a bunch going on down there regarding the quiet zones and some of the railroad improvements. Curious as to how they affect this. When we talk about neighborhoods, we don't have a lot of residential housing down there if, if I know what we're talking about. This is, I guess you got Olympia to the, to the south and Granby pretty far away on the other side of, of everything to the, to the west. So, but, but you heard the questions, Mr. Beck, out soon?
Yes, and, and appreciate the time this afternoon, council members. And yeah, happy to answer any, any questions. Can everybody, I guess, hear me okay, kind of first of all?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Perfect, yeah. So I think the first one, I guess, kind of question addressing safety, I think is, as part of our BOZA and site plan approval back in December of 2020, I believe the planning commission has a condition of our approval has required us, you know, to, to do some additional signage, striping, kind of, you know, reflections to again, kind of help, help with the safety concerns, I think, that were brought up at that time. I think the same safety concerns you guys as well have. And I believe also, and, and you guys, I'll defer to you, I'll probably know more about this than we do. But during with the quiet zone discussions, I believe there, the improvements, I think, are already been funded. I think it's either the state or, or county level for kind of improved safety crossings, I think, over that Lincoln crossing. And so I think with the combination of both of those things, we feel like we've, we've met kind of the, the concerns that were, were brought up during planning commission, then also at the county level.
And Mr. Rick, a question about parking. I think Ryan addressed it specifically. But I'm trying to remember when we first brought this incentive to the county. I mean, obviously the, the, the major concern was, wasn't trying to get free public parking. It was, it was, it was about the, the significant tax burden that, that 6% properties were, were bearing and how stymied development, we're talking about a 70-plus million dollar development here. Even with the abatement, paying close to a million a year and, and two, two times that, once the, the product matures in 11 years. I just think I want to just keep our eyes on, on, on that, on that significant development. So, and if in fact, this is not something we want to do prospectively, let's keep that in mind too. But if someone could just take a look too, I, cause I, I want to say the county, one of the county council people told me that they, they voted significantly in favor of that stuff. But what are the questions we have, Mr. Beck? And, and I don't know if the man, if Mayor Cobal's on to, any other questions?
I think Mayor Cobal's available.
See, Tamika has, I have that.
Well, I was just going to share, I, I spoke with Mr. Beck and Mayor Cobal earlier. I shared some of my concerns and reservations. You know, I do think that we need to have the bigger conversation about prospectively as to whether or not there is a need to continue to incentivize these types of projects. I, I think that we primed the well. We certainly did what we needed to do. We, we sunset it and then we continued. So I think we need to really look at that. But one of the things, when I did discuss with him, the student housing portion, Mr. Beck addressed, maybe changing the structure so that it was not primarily for students. And so, Mr. Beck or Mayor Cobal, can you address that for everybody? So that we can discuss what you're willing to do on that piece?
Yes, absolutely. Appreciate that. Oops, sorry.
I, I was gonna, this is Bob Cobal. First up, been listening for the last two hours and had a flashback and had to call Kirk Manfely just to get grounded in, in a city council. Y'all do a terrific job. Let me say the issue that arose was would they lease or rent per bed? And, and they don't really do that, but I, that seems to be an issue that they will be delighted to address and rent per unit and, you know, get the, however that needs to be done in a way that you're comfortable it'll happen. That, then it would be just like any other commercial property. I do think this is, this is the policy the city and the county adopted in 2019. And if you want to change it, we certainly understand that. But you know, they've gone through the process, BOZA, planning commission, two readings at county council. And actually it was only one dissenting vote at each one of those two, third reading scheduled. And so they're willing to do anything to work in any way to address safety issues or, you know, how it operates, vis a vis student housing in any way that you, you, you think appropriate. Let me ask Adam if he would add on to the per-unit issue and any other issue.
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor Cobal. So yeah, it's kind of to direct the, direct to the question. Yeah, we're, we're obviously open to, to leasing by the unit, you know, our, our kind of original discussions. And I think kind of message we've had through, through most of our conversations with the county. And I think even through our initial kind of meetings with the city and, and planning commission and BOZA was, you know, we, we leased, you know, anybody that would qualify, whether it was on a per-bed or per, per-unit basis. And I understand there's, you know, stigmas that go with, with either one of those. And we didn't want to kind of, you know, limit, limit the, you know, the, the target renter there. But again, if there's concerns over, over the idea or the thought or the structure leasing by the bed, we are absolutely okay leasing by the unit to kind of address, you know, any concern that may have.
And, and one other thing, Adam, if you could address, I believe there are 56 public spaces that will be as a result of, of this project. 11 of them are in the garage. The rest of them are outside, which of course would be much convenient for the public that might want to use it. But Adam, could you address that?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So it's, it's, we have the 11 in the park, in the, in the parking garage. And then the rest will be along Catawba and Lincoln, as well as 10 surface spaces, kind of just outside the garage that will all be available for public use. And then as well as kind of the, the rest of the, I guess, kind of overall, you know, improvements we're doing. And I don't know if this is kind of the, the documents that were shared was, you know, we're, we're doing a significant, significant amount of environmental cleanup onsite. Obviously removing kind of the, two existing kind of light industrial buildings. We're improving obviously the streetscape, landscape, you know, along Lincoln and Catawba streets. You know, hopefully trying to kind of, you know, bridge the connection to kind of, you know, downtown Gervais Street, you know, US Creek Village too, you know, the Granby and Olympia Mills neighborhoods. So again, it's, it's not specifically just related to parking, but as well as those other improvements and utility upgrades and such that were, you know, is part of the overall application and commercial incentive.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Beck?
Has there, has there been, has there been community input relative to the, to the project?
Yes, there have. We've met with the Granby Mills and Olympia Mills Neighbor Associations a few times. Actually had a couple of phone calls as follow-ups as we, as we've gone through the process. We got actually their input before even submitting, I think, for our planning commission and, and BOZA submittals. Cause we want to come in and obviously be good neighbors and make everybody aware of what, what we're doing and what we're projecting. We're not trying to, you know, hide anything. We're going to be honest and upfront. And I think what was great is we showed some preliminary elevations of what we were kind of envisioning in our first kind of cut or draft of renderings and actually presented that to the neighbor associations and actually got some very good and constructive feedback that actually we incorporated in our next rendition of renderings, which I think you guys have seen through our submittals, that the neighbor association honestly basically was the main reason why we made a lot of these changes and kind of went for more of a, a modern industrial look as opposed to some other designs that we were thinking we were, we were going to go down. So long, long answer to a short question, yes, we, we have been in communication throughout there, throughout our process.
Well, with that said, Mr. Beck, are they supportive of it? Did they give you a letter of support for the conversations?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, yeah.
Yeah, that's who we all.
I mean, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, we, I, I mean, I'll go back and look, I don't know if we have a letter or an email, but I've gotten, I guess, verbal support and I guess maybe the other way to say it, we haven't, they haven't come out against us or at any point in time. So that's not on the letter specifically for you that I can share. But in all the time we've communicated, we've had, they've been supportive of our project.
Now that, let me make sure, that's 675 beds or 575?
It's 278 units and 670-ish beds in one, two and three bedroom units.
Okay. All right.
Beck, can, can you address, we talked about it before you got on the line, the safety and traffic concerns?
Yes, is this in, is it relation to the Lincoln railroad crossing?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think again, as kind of part of our site plan approval, we've agreed to work with the city to, you know, address any kind of safety precautions, whether it's, you know, signage, painting, striping, reflectors to kind of help improve that, that crossing to address safety concerns. And then as well as I think, you know, again, I think that quiet zone or that specific crossing has already been funded, I think, at a, at a different tier, level for even, you know, more improvements above that. So we, we've incorporated that and that's a condition of our site plan approval, which we received back in December. And then I guess in terms of traffic, I think that, you know, will, will be dependent, I think, what ultimately is decided by the railroad and by the city and state on kind of what the plan is for the, the railroad in, you know, that specific section. So we're, we're willing to work with anybody in all agencies to alleviate any, you know, specific traffic concerns. But without a traffic study completed and there wasn't any, I think specifically stated that, you know, any additional remediation was needed based on our project.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I call for the previous question.
With the previous question, Kirk, call her all.
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Mr. Rickaman?
No.
Mr. McDowell?
No.
Mr. Duval?
No.
Mr. Vine?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, here you stand.
No.
Mayor Benjamin?
I'm actually going to vote in the affirmative. And we need to go ahead and make a determination and maybe this specific project. The developers, the location, maybe the proximity to the railroad, whatever it happens to be. But as it relates to the incentive and whether or not we choose that we want to officially sunset it, not yet set. I think it's, it's supposed to sunset at the end of next year. Then we need to make an affirmative policy decision. These developers have expended significant sums of money to move forward on the policy that we have approved. And it's not pro-business for us to, to change things mid-street. So just let's, let's pray over that, think about that going forward. And we're going to the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Item 35, ordinance number 2021-029, amending the 1998 Code of Ordnance as the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 23, Utilities and Engineering, Article One in General, Section 231, Civil Penalties for Violations Related to Waste Water Collection and Treatment or Treatment and Distribution, Article Four, Waste Water Service, Section 231.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? With the previous question, Kirk, call her all.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Someone's got to take away Sam's mute button. Can we disable Sam's mute button? Is that possible?
You don't want to do that.
Yeah, I know we don't actually. I know we don't.
Thank you.
Sorry, Erica, did you say something? No ma'am, thank you. Solutions, we move forward with safety plans there in adherence with COVID-19 pandemic safety and social distancing protocols as published by the CDC and DHEC, South Carolina DHEC. And we had these for the various events reviewed and approved by Columbia Police Department. The event on your agenda today is the resolution number R2021-029, authorizing consumption of beer and wine only within Boyd Plaza adjacent to Columbia Museum of Art.
Ms. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
What's the size of the event? What is, what was the detail on the paperwork?
I don't know that we necessarily, we, we can't address capacity necessarily anymore, Reverend McDowell. You know, it's an event that's open to the public.
The, I do know.
All COVID, all COVID and CDC requirements, the plans are in place?
Those that we can authorize through city processes, yes, sir.
But it's, it's a public event.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Move approval.
Second, I would say Ed, just as a, as a venue manager, the art museum does a pretty good job out there at, at Boyd Plaza. So my, my guess is they'll be, they'll be managing things effectively as well, if they give you any comfort. Oh, move the previous question.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rick? Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
No.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Devine?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you, ma'am.
Let me into a period of resolutions. Item thirty-seven is resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero-four-three, approving the honorary naming of the Lion Street Community Garden.
Move approval.
Second.
Previous question? I know, I mean, we love, we love, we loved Marvin. Miss him, something awful.
Good man.
Move the previous question, ma'am.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye, sorry.
All right, all right, little Sam. All right.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Marvin was the smoothest bossy man I've ever known. He would get, he would get what he wanted. But he but he was always nice and smiling every step of the way. We miss him.
And it doesn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily have to be in a council chamber. I mean, he'd do that in the grocery store.
It wouldn't even have to be, it wouldn't even have to be in his neighborhood either. Yeah, no, good man, good man.
Item thirty-eight, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero-four-eight, approving the honorary naming of the intersection of Colonial Drive and the street, Bill Shab's Way.
I move approval.
Okay.
Discussion. Move the previous question for color roll?
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
And Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item thirty-nine is resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero-two-six, supporting the Housing Authority of the City of Columbia engaging in the Marion Street High-Rise Disposition Project. And I will say, Mayor and Council, I've asked several questions about this. I didn't want to ask you to hold it unless, you know, that's your. Decision. I'm I'm trying to just get some clarity on what you're actually endorsing here. With the disposition and and the adjacent property.
Ms. Wilson, I talked, I have met with Ms. Matthews and Cameron Carmody and Ms. Commissioner Sinclair yesterday. So this is a HUD requirement. They're going through all the checks and this is required for them to actually relocate the residents. I've got commitment from her that this does not commit any particular disposition. But there are some questions and I we can, we've got a long agenda, so I'd like to maybe talk about it with. Particularly Krista and Amy. There are some concerns I have apparently about. Historic Columbia and their role in, they're one of the boxes that have to be checked for HUD. And there is some. Discussion as to whether or not there's some artifacts that are more on the property. So that that's a bigger discussion. I think we have to have this, but. My understanding, this is just to allow them to move forward with the relocation of the residence and they'd like to start that process. So this is time sensitive.
Because this, the historic Columbia piece is out, Man Simons, is that is that the or something on the on the property itself?
On the property itself, apparently in nineteen eighty-something, there was some archaeological dig that may have revealed some artifacts that. Are on the Housing Authority property. And so under, from what I understand, it was really. It was a little confusing. That's why I'd like our staff to be involved. But as Ms. Matthews indicated to me. South Carolina Archives and History actually has to be part of the people who agree. And there is some conversation as to whether or not the Man Simons footprint is indeed larger than we know and that it would extend towards. The Marion Street property. And if so, there's a desire to obtain that property, which would. Reduce the footprint already existing for the Housing Authority. So it it seems like there's a lot of. Discussion and I don't understand why it's a look any different than Bull Street and how we were allowed to do the archaeological dig, but they, it didn't affect the. The sale of the property. So I I think we have to ask more questions and understand that because. That will affect their potential redevelopment of that site.
Well, I remember that entire, whether it's Man Simons or that entire neighborhood was a, you know, significant African-American. Community and we just conducted the Man Simons dig just a few years ago and found, you know, some significant artifacts that told a lot about Columbia's history. My guess is that there should be some sandborne maps out there from the early part of the last century that should tell us exactly what was there. So that, yeah, I think let's definitely make sure we cross those seas and dot those eyes.
I think our staff has been asking those questions and has some, Missy may have some information. We were just concerned that if you go ahead and approve it, maybe we need to adjust this letter to reflect. You know, that all of these things are. Dealt with properly. But Missy, what do you want to add?
Yes, ma'am. That's what, when I spoke with Housing Authority earlier today and they have agreed that when those parcels are identified, they all. Already have a survey plaque showing which parcels they would donate to the city to combine with the Man Simons House. So. Got a few more questions they need to clarify before that actually happens. But certainly they're receptive to us, including that acknowledgement in any letter. She did reiterate the time sensitivity. They cannot file with HUD. The motion they need to file to vacate the property until they have our approved resolution. So it's very time sensitive from their standpoint.
Davis?
Good question. Who owns, who owns the survey? And. What, when did they do it? When the date on the survey?
Dave, she sent it to me earlier. They have recently performed that survey after. Conversations to include Historic Columbia about the need to make sure that we're protecting that site. There's actually two small parcels. One is. Point oh-six acres. They refer to that as the Ghost Parcel. And we know for sure we want that. There's another parcel that's point one-nine acres. That we believe may also need to be deeded over to combine with the Man Simons House, and they're willing to do that. Their one question is, can they still need all of the code requirements for the remaining parcel and sell that parcel? Once they do those two smaller sites to us. And we're working through those answers right now. Certainly, they can sell it. We just need to make sure that it would be code compliant without those two small parcels they would do to us. Let me look and see if I can tell you the date of the survey. I'm looking for that right now. If y'all have more questions, I'll answer that shortly.
I think we just got a guilty verdict.
Absolutely.
Good.
Would y'all mind, Reverend Dow? Would you, would you, would you mind, Ed?
He's watching it.
I know he is.
Sam, sorry.
Would you, would you, would you mind give us a word of prayer? Before we go on with the rest of this discussion, just in the wake of this verdict?
Sure.
Thank you, brother.
These are turbulent times in our nation. Turbulent times in terms of chaos. Lord, we would simply pray that this nation of ours is, and it confines itself into a vacuum of peace and harmony. Lord, we know that there are things happening throughout this country of ours and particularly in this city of ours.
Okay.
We would simply ask that you might continue to wrap your arms around those of us who. Understand and sense the tenets of peace and harmony. Lord, we know that violence is contagious and we know that it metastasizes everywhere. So, Lord, we just simply ask that you might give us a kind of peace that passes all understanding. For decisions that are made, we simply ask that in your wise counsel. That you might allow us to vent and to feel your presence. Lord, we need your help in these coming days. We ask you. In your name, amen.
Thank you, Rev. A lot of people going through some very difficult times right now. And it's. It's important we we work hard to remain together. So thank, thank you, Reverend Dow. Thank you. Daniel.
Are we going to get a briefing from the Housing Authority? On what the plan is and and what they're, where they're relocating the residents and what their long-term plan is? Because this is going to be the third. Area in our downtown area that is going to be vacated by the Housing Authority. And. We know Gonzalee Gardens is not complete and it's been sitting there for a long time. ABC, Allen Benedict, which I hate that we can't rehab it because I think it'd be an incredible project with some incredible talent, but. It's not our choice. And then we're going to have this building and, you know, there are a lot of rumors flying around on what's going to happen at Allen Benedict. There's a big push, you know, I'm hearing a lot of different things. I think it'd be great if we just get some clarity so that we we understand what their plan is moving forward.
I think that's important. We've gotten, I think we may have mentioned the last official briefing we got and then. Had some conversations with the with the chairman and other commissioners that indicate some action, but I have not seen the 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 final plans and and some very. Clear direction as to what's going to happen with these properties. I think that's important. We get that sooner. Rather than later, because I believe even the timelines that we were shown last time, there was a presentation. I don't think we've come close to meeting those timelines. I'd like to see that as well. Uh, Mr. Mr. Davis?
I. I can, I agree with Daniel, but my my concern is. We talk of the downtown area. We are relocating a significant number of African-Americans. And the question is, where do they go? Are they going to have another opportunity to live within the real inner parts of the city? Keep that in mind. Significant number of people that are going to be relocated. Question is, where are you going to put them?
So so I briefly spoke with Housing Authority again this morning. The first question you had, the survey dated March nineteenth of two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Davis. So it's a recent survey.
The. I would only be interested if that survey. Matches the the, what's nineteen, whatever. I remember that one. I remember both of them. So. Just kind of look at the footprint.
Okay, I will share. And what this survey does is show the two parcels that they would subdivide to deed to the city if we. Are interested in that, which I think we are, at least in the Ghost Parcel, based on Historic Columbia's input. I do know that there's a total unit count in this property of a hundred and forty-six, but there's only around eighty individuals in the property right now. Columbia Housing has told me they can't really start talking about their relocation plan for those eighty residents until they file with HUD or they. They've got to follow the HUD rules and they have to file an action with HUD prior to really laying out the relocation plan. However, they have worked with these residents and they're very familiar with the interest of these individuals as far as where, whether they. Would want to stay in the city, whether there's specific properties they want to go to, or if they have family elsewhere and would want to go somewhere else in the state. I don't have those details, but it did sound like they've worked with the individual residents. To to identify options at the time they are able to do that. And Mr. Devine, I know you're working with Housing Authority a lot too. I'm glad to ask for a briefing if you want me to do that or if that's something that. You want to reach out to Iver to ask for, I'll defer to you.
No, you guys go go ahead. I mean, I think that she would be happy to come and and talk. I think to just elevate what Missy said. There's a process that HUD requires and so this, they're they're checking boxes. But. You know, Councilman McDowell and I met with Ms. Ms. Matthews maybe two months ago and we made it clear of our desire that. Relocations happen within the city and where they can adaptively reuse properties that they do. And she heard that loud and clear and I spoke with her about that again yesterday. I think that they have significant challenges of the the. The maintenance of of the facilities. And so I think that that they're doing the best they can. I do know that there are. New properties that they have obtained that are within the city. And that that is part of where their relocation. So they're being very cognizant of the fact that they want, we want to maintain our residents in the city. And certainly make sure that they're they are on bus lines and other things. So they're very sensitive to that. And I just think it's probably well over overtime for a briefing. And we can raise all these these concerns and and questions and get a briefing. I would say, Missy, we probably would need to. Figure out what needs to be in public and what might need to be an executive session because I do know that there is information that they cannot. Share publicly at this time.
Making Ed, did they give you any idea of a timeline? I mean, obviously, a number of different reasons that. Different projects have gone offline. But it'd be nice to see a start date on one of them. At least very soon, because I know they're not just the gardens or Allen Benedict and now. Marion Street, but I know there's several other projects they've been looking at, working with some developers on. But are we going to see go on anything anytime soon?
I think go on Gonzalez is imminent. And so I don't know if Councilman McDowell has additional timeline, but I think that's very close. I do know, and I think it may have been on our agenda at one time, the the bonds are also something that they're looking at and they. I know she sent us a list of the the different bonds that they want to look at. So I think that's part of. Their immediate plan as well is get the funding in place to get some of these projects up and running.
Steve, Mr. Mayor, there has, there was a timeline, Daniel. That was emailed out to us some time ago. And I want to say it was early March that Ms. Matthews did send out a timeline, particularly for. Gonzalez and for the place there off of Two Knots Road. I can't, I can't call them.
Carter Street.
Carter Street, that's correct. Carter Street. There are some architectural drawings that they've. Put together. And of course, that looks very, very promising. But there, Daniel, there is a timeline schedule that she did send out.
Did y'all hear that? Because I just checked my email. I haven't received an email from Ms. Matthews since January of two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, January twenty, January seventh to be specific. And and I I don't have it either. The. More so thinking about the the report from, I guess, well over a year ago on on how some things would move forward. And. And I'm sure, I mean, hopefully, the the time has given us the opportunity to really make some even better, more solid decisions. But. I if we're going to start turning dirt on the gardens, that'd be that'd be wonderful. Obviously, the proper relocation of the residents. Preferably in their own, their their own communities and then the opportunity to recreate those properties is is so important. But obviously, the eventual use of those properties, highest of best use. Mixed use, mixed income, whatever it looks like. It'd be nice to see that and actually see some. We're still in the middle of a pretty doggone hot market with a with a significant need for affordable housing. Let's not miss the market because people need it. And. And so if things are moving, I'd. And so, if things are moving, I'd love to see that too. And it doesn't have to be a full presentation to council. I mean, I'll take a written report with some specifics as when things are actually happening.
The emails from the Housing Authority don't have Ivory Matthews' name on the address. It's a funny, funny-looking thing. But she has been sending out communications about every other week. And she has talked about just about all the things y'all have talked about right now.
Yeah, that's the one. It'll say no reply.
Yeah.
And they, yeah, they're continuously sending out stuff. But those are the public ones. I do think that based on the comments, maybe a private briefing would answer some of these questions.
All right. Let's get an update on all the projects. Great Z.
So, for item 39, or how do you all want to proceed today?
Said times are the essence. Want to be real transparent, I'm tired of asking the Housing Authority for things and not getting what we asked for. We had a pretty serious back and forth. Ed's smiling because he knows exactly where I'm going on the shopping center that I'm trying our darndest to make sure people had access to healthy foods. And we got the stiff arm there and I didn't feel good about it. And I shared that very directly. I understand if the Housing Authority is going to focus on the central role of simply providing housing as opposed to trying to address all the social determinants of health. I understand that. That's okay. But at very least, let's start seeing some housing come out the ground in post haste. I'm fine with voting for this resolution, but I would hope and pray that we'll start seeing some movement and not more talk. We don't need more thinking. We need action. I'll move the previous question.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Mr. Davis?
I'm not homesick, brother.
I thought you had turned over.
I share the mayor's concerns. My vote is aye though.
I'll vote in affirmative and we'd like a prompt report from the Executive Director and the Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just forward you guys a timeline as well on some of the projects. So, that might be helpful while we're waiting on the report.
Thank you.
Did you get that, Daniel? I'll let you know.
I wonder what specialists y'all on and me and Daniel are on, by the way, but we'll talk about that later.
I think y'all were talking. You missed the exchange.
Everybody except you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Dan, you got it, Daniel? You got the no reply? I just searched no replies and I got a bunch of other stuff.
I got a call from Topeka.
I don't think they still got what we're talking about, Reverend McDowell and Mr. Van.
They're cracking jokes on us? Yeah.
Ed turned over in his chair.
No, I'm not homesick yet, brother. I'm still alive and well.
All right, item 40.
Thank you, Howard.
Resolution number R 2021 037, certifying building site as a textile mill site pursuant to the South Carolina Textiles Communities Revitalization Act title.
Move approval.
Again. In discussion. Move the previous question. Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
41, resolution number R 2021 039, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement of sale and purchase between the City of Columbia and Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc., for the purchase of 2.24 acres known as 3,000 Harden Street in Richland County.
Go move.
All right. Move the previous question. I'm sorry, discussion. Move the previous question. Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 42, resolution number R 2021 041, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sales agreement between the City of Columbia and Eden's Graham Partners for the purchase of approximately 2.24 acres.
Do you have a second?
Second.
In discussion. Move the previous question. Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 43, resolution number R 2021 044, encouraging Governor Henry McMaster to request the U.S. Department of the Treasury to release South Carolina's allocation of appropriated funds from the Homeowner Assistance Fund authorized through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And I think Mr. Vine, you sponsored this.
Yes, I just kind of related to our conversation earlier. There are monies that we got direct allocation. There's also monies that go to the state. There are certain things that our state actually has to request in order to get it. And so, in working with Habitat for Humanity and, well, Habitat for Humanity and some other homeless providers, and they've asked that we do this resolution. I've already spoken to Kyle. So, once we pass it, we will make sure that it goes to the governor's office. I do understand that others have sent similar letters or resolutions. So, hopefully, there will be a request from our state for this additional funding to help our homeowners and rental assistance get help.
All right. Do you have a second? Move the previous question. Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. A period of appointments, Mayor and councils, on your agenda with two items, the Climate Protection Action Committee and the Columbia Housing Authority, which I think that is the resident seat. But I'll allow Ms. Wood to help you all.
Who?
Thank you, Manager Wilson.
It's Ms. Wood.
Ms. Jenkins Wood.
I didn't know who that was.
Who do we have with CPAC? Actually, you know, I had to teach you at least one time.
I know. I did. Me too, Mayor.
All right. How many seats do we have on CPAC?
Oh, CPAC. There's three officers. It's actually the new slate of officers-elect on your memo. And they're asking for you to approve the slate of these officers.
All right. Is there a motion? Discussion?
Move approval of the slate produced by CPAC.
Second. In discussion. Move the previous question. Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Next up, we have the Columbia Housing Authority Resident Commissioner. Again, this is to select a resident amidst the qualifications of actually living in one of the properties, living within the same unit, and to be considered to assist with CHA input. And we have the applicants that you were sent. Please also look at your recent email as well.
Ashley, can I add, in looking at the list that Ms. Wood has provided us, there was an applicant that was missing from the list that I know sent an application. I'm not sure if it got lost in the mail. But when I saw reviewing my packet, saw she was not over there, I confirmed with her that she did send it. So, she has sent me a copy of her application along with a copy of a letter written by the MLK Neighborhood endorsing her application. And I've sent that to Ms. Wood. I don't know if we can get it sent to everybody, but the applicant would be.
Is this Kimball Hicks?
Kimball and Hicks, yes.
She'd be an excellent appointment, appointee.
Yes.
So, Mr. Green is termed out?
He is.
Yeah, yes, yes, he is.
I moved the appointment of Kimball Hicks. I'm sorry, Mr. McDowell.
Ashley, let me ask you a question. Ms. Wood, I'm sorry. Let me ask you a question. There was a vetting process?
Well, essentially, the applications, yes, they were open for a month. And they applied either by mailing in or sending it online. And from that point on, you all have received all of the applications that were submitted. However, the board made additional recommendations that you.
Mr. McDowell?
From the Administrative Committee. Of course, we've had long and genuine conversations about the renaming of the park there in Bull Street. Dr. Bobby Donaldson and Robin Waits have been very resourceful in allowing us to look at persons and look at names. The committee at its last meeting decided to go ahead and do some additional vetting of those names that were submitted, somewhere between 15 and 17 names. The committee, which is composed of Howard and Sam, we consensually decided on the name of Paige Ellington. Paige Ellington. There has been conversations with the Hughes Company. And of course, in our deliberations, we thought that Mr. Ellington was the person to name that park afterwards. Of course, Mr. Ellington, whose house is still standing there in the, I think, in the Wheeler Hill area.
Arsenal Hill.
Arsenal Hill, I'm sorry. In the Arsenal Hill area. He was a self-taught architect that worked very closely with Dr. Babcock. He was very instrumental in his studies in the forming of domes for the buildings. He was very instrumental in the building of Bakery there and several other buildings in that area. Of course, we bring this name to you for your approval. And of course, there are other names that we'd like to see throughout the park as it relates to toppers, street naming, and that sort of thing. So, Mr. Mayor, we bring this name to the council. And there are other members of the committee, perhaps that would like to see some. Howard?
Yeah. Thank you, Ed. Paige Ellington is a really special person when it's connected to the Bull Street property. He was an enslaved person from Rockingham, North Carolina, who was sold to Columbia. He taught himself against his master's wishes, the art of bricklaying, and became a master bricklayer. He was befriended by Dr. Babcock. And because of his architectural skills, he actually designed several of the buildings that are on the campus. We know that he did the Parker Annex that's still standing down there. And we are using Dr. Babcock's book called Asylum Doctor, who has extensive footnotes and references where these documents are kept. And Dr. Donaldson is going to the Caroliniana Library and get that box and see what else he, Mr. Ellington, built on the property. And Ed said his house is still standing down on Arsenal Hill. He built the original steeple for First Presbyterian Church. And he was instrumental in the founding and the worship in several of the churches that are still active in Columbia today. During reconstruction, he was in political office and had a lot of influence in the politics of the city. And he is a very worthy person to name that park after. We hope to name other facilities, put other Wayfairing signs in the park to take care of the 14 or 15 other very credible names also to honor the people that helped develop the Bull Street property.
I concur with Ed and Howard. Said it well.
He represents for us in Columbia. He was very ecumenical in his service to churches. He was a member of the Washington Street Methodist Church, a member of the Bethel AME Church, and of course, a member of the Lapsan Presbyterian Church. So, he was a guy who had all the credentials of leadership for our city. I understand that he was an elected official, joined the Board of Health, and joined the Board of Health as a member of that board for mental health in 1875, I believe. So, this man represents a real gift to Columbia. So, I bring this name, I raise this name for your consideration.
Was the plan to get approval today? Or have you all, have you all dialogued with, obviously, Bobby and Robin were very involved in advancing this? And have you all conferred with the Hugheses as well?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, sir. Hughes, Robert, and Claire, I think that's Claire.
Chandler.
Chandler, that was Chandler. They were right in the midst of that conversation. So, we're ready to act on that today, Mr. Mayor.
I think it's a wonderful, I think it's a wonderful recognition. And I love when, that period in our history, the reconstruction era in particular, was such an amazing time, particularly in South Carolina. We led the country in many ways, in many respects. And lifting up a name of someone who others might not ever have known existed. An ordinary person learning extraordinary life is a pretty amazing opportunity. If that's a motion, a second, a second motion here. I need further discussion. Thank you all for your work on this. Move the previous question. Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Could y'all send out the bio on the gentleman, please?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I'll forward that information. Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a report as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Vine. I'm sorry, Ed, you're going to finish. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Vine. Erica, if you would, not only send it, how about sending that bio to all of us? I mean, we have it already. And Howard has that delightful book, The Asylum Doctor. But the bio would be helpful for those of you who don't know Ms. Ellington.
Erica, send the PowerPoint that Historic Columbia used. It has not only Paige Ellington, but the other considerations on there.
Yes, sir.
Send, it'll have the bio for him, but it's got everybody else on there too.
Sure will. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Vine.
Just, Mr. Mayor, just an update from the Tax Study Committee. Councilman Duval, Councilman Rickaman, and I met this morning. As previously reported in our initial meeting, we decided that it might be best to get each of us find an economist who can review Dr. Galatzon's study and meet with us to give us any feedback and any. who can, uh, review Dr. Galatson's, um, study and meet with us to give us any feedback and any, um, considerations that, uh, as we move forward. So, uh, we have each selected, um, an economist. Um, we've got Stephen Walters, J K Walters, uh, James London and Holly Obrich. Um, and all three have agreed to serve in this capacity. Um, we, uh, plan to meet and, um, Ms. Hammond will send you guys the bios for these three, um, as well as, uh, Professor Derek Black, uh, from the Law School. He is not an economist, but he is an expert on school equity and school funding. And so we thought as we elevate this conversation, we certainly need to have someone with his expertise that could maybe help us, um, can make certain considerations that aren't, um, just economic based, but certainly equity based as it relates to our schools and, and the way they're, they are funded and taxed. So our goal is to have an initial meeting within the next two weeks with the three economists and ourselves to, uh, hear their, uh, their assessment of Dr. Galatson's report as well as, um, any considerations that they think that we need to have as far as how the process should move forward, uh, especially bringing in the county and, and other stakeholders as part of the conversation. Um, after the six of us meet along with staff, uh, we plan to bring in Professor Black, uh, so that he can add, um, in his, in, uh, his input as well. And then hopefully by then we'll be in a position to bring back to council a path forward, a recommendation for a path forward on how we want to have this discussion moving forward. Um, we do, uh, we have provided the report to each of them. Along with, we were able to obtain a copy of, uh, the Lincoln Study. And so Ms. Hammond will send those to, that to you as well. Um, but we want you to know that we are moving forward and we think that hopefully within, uh, the next month or so, we, we can have a recommendation for council to consider.
For referrals?
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Are you all, did you all have any other reports or referrals?
I think that's it. I think we're, we're ready to go. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, any, any citizen? Um, uh, in the queue? Public input?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right. Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to S C Code thirty dash four day seventy-eight-two COVID-nineteen redistricting in a quiet zone, uh, bond court proceedings. Uh, discussion of matters related to proposed location or expand, or expansion of services to encourage location or expansion of industries or other businesses pursuant to S C Code thirty dash four day seventy-eight-two affordable housing projects. Discussion of negotiations instant to propose contractual arrangements pursuant to thirty dash four day seventy-eight-two Owensville Park and stormwater fees. Uh, receipt of legal advice related to pending threat and a potential claim pursuant to S C Code thirty dash four day seventy-eight-two former council member. And discussion regarding the development of security personnel or devices pursuant to S C Code thirty dash four day seventy-eight-three Nehemiah Action Assembly.
Do you have a second?
I can.
Any discussion? Saying none with the previous question, Kirk Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell?
You'll mute Ed?
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.